Sorry, seven o'clock. Roll call please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Kane?
Present.
Campion?
Here.
Crew?
Here.
We will have a moment of silent prayer and then a flag. Presentation by PAC-84 House Scouts there, Dan Sevins. And I would ask that in this moment of silent prayer that you will remember the friends and family on our Galt Police Department in honor of our Officer Kevin Tom who gave his life for the city in January.
Please repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance under the flag of the United States of America in two or three republics, a rigid plan, one nation, under God, under visual, with liberty and justice served. Two. Color guard post the colors. Color guard dismiss.
Thank you gentlemen, that was a very good job for your first time.
Don't you just love it?
Okay Liz, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please silence or turn off any cell phones.
Thank you Liz. Are there any agenda additions, deletions?
I would like to pull E5 and E8.
Okay, E5 and E8.
Also I'd like E4 pulled please.
Okay, E4. Heard her mic, any, anything? Okay, so at this time we'll go on with the presentations and I'd like to first call if it's okay with the council Pastor Rick Kaiser, Keizer. Keizer up here, we'd like to present a proclamation to him recognizing February 7th through 14th as Congenial Heart Defect Awareness Week. And Liz, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Whereas congenital heart defects are the most frequently occurring birth defects and the leading cause of birth defect related deaths worldwide, and whereas every 40,000 babies are born in the United States with congenital heart defects and some are not diagnosed until months or years after birth, and whereas a disproportionately small amount of funding is available for congenital heart defect research and support, and whereas Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week provides an opportunity for families whose lives have been affected to celebrate life and to remember loved ones' loss, to honor dedicated health professionals and to meet others and know they are not alone, and whereas the establishment of Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week will also provide the opportunity to share experience and information with the public and the media in order to raise public awareness about congenital heart defects. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Galt, California that February 7th through 14th, 2013 be declared Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Week, that the Galt community support the inaugural Tiny Miles Event on February 8th, and all citizens be encouraged to increase awareness, education, and services for congenital heart defects.
Pastor Rick before I come down and give you the proclamation, would you like to say a few words?
Well first thank you so much, that means a lot to me and certainly to the CHD community. I know around the United States, we're trying to bring awareness to CHD. Most of you know that my son passed away December of 2011, so it's become near and dear to my heart. Our event's February 9th, not the 8th, so that's okay. But thank you so much for honoring this effort.
first presentation?
I'll turn it, I'll turn, oh sorry, just a little. Okay, I'll turn it to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, Frank Galago, Galt Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director, and Dr. Robert Pike, Consulting Engineer.
Good evening Mayor Powers, Vice Mayor Singleton, City Council staff, and special recognition to Police Chief William Bowen. As the actual former Executive Director of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce, I've been granted special authority tonight by Galt Chamber President Tammy Belutoff and her board to represent the chamber this evening. I am requesting on behalf of the Galt District Chamber of Commerce that the City Council consider writing a letter to the Governor of California to ask why serious alternatives to his Bay Delta Conservation Plan's current preferred project is not being considered. The current BDCP consists of three massive intakes on the Sacramento River in the North Delta, a large four bay somewhere in the North Delta, the location still remains to be determined, and twin massive underground tunnels 30 miles long and 40 feet wide to the South Delta. The cost of this project, multiple billions of dollars, I don't think anyone really knows just how much. To date it appears that only variations on this one theme have been considered. Other alternatives which do no damage and which instead will enhance the economy of the Delta region such as the Western Delta Intakes Concept proposed by Dr. Robert Pike must be considered. According to the Delta Protection Commission, the statewide impact of Delta agriculture, when you include value-added manufacturing, is about 25,000 jobs and 5.372 billion in economic output. The chamber's principal objection to the project being discussed under the Bay Delta Conservation Plan, the BDCP, is that in addition to damaging the fragile Delta ecosystem, seriously impacting the viability of both recreational and commercial fishing, the BDCP proposes to take up to 100 square miles of land out of agricultural production for the creation of ill-defined tidal wetlands. This is Sacramento's current answer to offset the environmental damage that the BDCP itself will create. Taking 100 square miles of agricultural land out of production alone would create a $1 billion a year annual hit on our local economy, and that does not take in account the upfront cost of funding the BDCP with its massive underground tunnels. Of course someone will need to pay for acquiring currently productive land from innocent farmers just trying to make a living. The $1 billion that I speak about doesn't take in account the damage it will do to the remaining Delta farmland that will be forced to deal with increased salt intrusion created by diminished freshwater flowing through the Delta. As loosely as big government throws around money, maybe a billion dollars is not a lot these days, but why should we take the hit for urban water districts in Southern California? Especially when there is a viable alternative that is being ignored. Carol Lee Krieger, Executive Director of the California Water Impact Network says the following, and I quote her, "Governor Brown is not giving the full cost of the peripheral tunnels when he says it will cost $14 billion. The cost will easily exceed $60 billion by the time financing, cost overruns, mitigation, operations, and maintenance are counted. Californians will spend billions for tunnels with not a drop of more water being delivered to our cities and be absolutely no benefit to the environment." We at the Galt District Chamber of Commerce agree with Carol Lee Krieger's statement. It is not at all clear that the Governor understands any details of the BDCP, and I suggest that you urge the Governor to take advice on this issue from a wider range of people rather than just relying on Under Secretary for Natural Resources Jerry Merrill, and specifically urge the Governor to consider the Western Delta Intakes Concept proposed by Dr. Robert Pike. Dr. Pike has tried to politely discuss this alternative with both Dr. Merrill and John Laird, the Secretary for Natural Resources, but Secretary Laird was dismissive and apparently even rude, which indicates that he also does not understand any of the details of the BDCP proposed project or whether there are any viable alternatives. The fact is, there is an alternative that could greatly benefit both Northern California and Southern California instead of pitting them against each other. Several months ago I wrote a column for the Lodi News Sentinel titled "The Single Most Important Man in California." Considering how important water and the food that it produces, not only for our region but the entire world, this title is not an exaggeration. The man I was referring to is Dr. Robert Pike. I have asked him to prepare a short presentation. Thank you Vice Mayor Mike Singleton and City Manager Berman for helping me get this on tonight's busy agenda. And Dr. Pike, if you would please take over. Thank you very much.
Thank you Frank.
Thank you Frank.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's an honor to be here in a real community outside the rooms that I normally speak in in Sacramento. What I'm going to do rather briefly is not so much promote my particular solution, but to explain very briefly what the problem is, what the goal should be, what, why the BDCP, the current program, doesn't address the problem and meet the goals, and to suggest one possible alternative. I have just three slides. Engineers like to, like to use illustrations partly to remind us what we're talking about, but partly because we like to deal with real data, and real data is often best shown graphically. What's on the screen which I think you're looking at behind me, but I'm looking at behind you, is a plot of flows in the Sacramento and San Joaquin Rivers over a long period of time. It doesn't quite go up to current time, but it covers 60-plus years. And if you look at a figure like this, you're struck not by the value of the average flow in these rivers, but by the variability, and by the fact that about every 15 years there's a bunch of wetter winters and bigger stream flows, and in between there are a bunch of drier years, which are normally called droughts. So if you look back, way back at the beginning, I'm not going to poke out anyone's eye, but I can point on the big screen up here, the six-year drought that occurred 1928 to 34. And you see that we've come close to having droughts like that since that time. One other feature on this plot that I chose is that in a very wet year like 1983, the amount of water that's taken out of the system, which is shown by the colors at the bottom, is in fact less than normal. So if someone just came from Mars or Australia, which is not that much different, you would say, "This is crazy. Shouldn't we be taking out more water in wet years and setting it aside?" And the simple answer is yes, that's what we should be doing, but the system was never designed to do that. And the other thing I'd point out on this slide is that in the earlier part of last century, even though the pattern of stream flow is much the same, what was taken out of the rivers was only down at this level, so that there was a lot of flow that still went through the Delta and through San Francisco Bay. With increasing draws on the rivers in the Delta, even though we haven't got down as low as we did, we got in 1928-34, in a period like this, the margin between the water that's available and the water that's taken out gets to be very small. That's why the Delta is in trouble as an ecosystem. All this leads to two basic principles. The second bullet is the one that I lead up to from the previous slide. There would make sense, at least to me, and I think to a lot of people, to extract more water during high flows and less or no water during low flows. Extract more water during high flows and put the excess over current demand in a piggy bank, that would actually be groundwater banks in the San Joaquin Valley, maybe some additional surface storage, but groundwater is probably the way to go. The top bullet, allow natural flows to pass through the Delta before any surplus is extracted for export, is a good idea for at least three reasons. It's a good idea for ecological reasons. The Delta's been converted from an estuary into a weedy lake because natural flows through it have been restricted and disrupted. So from the ecological point of view, it would be good if there was more natural flow through the Delta. It also means that if you take out the excess water in the Western Delta, such a scheme would be self-regulating. You can't over-extract from the Western Delta or you'll be sucking in salt. So this is a feature that makes a scheme that complies with these two principles attractive to a lot of Delta residents, farmers, providers of recreation facilities, who don't mind if excess water is exported, but they want controls, they want satisfaction that the excess, only excess water will be taken, and that ordinary flows in the Delta will still So how, how might one actually implement these two basic principles? There might be a number of ways to do this. Important thing to note is that the official program currently being pushed by the Governor doesn't satisfy either of these two basic principles. And what is needed is serious study of alternatives. Any serious alternative will comply with both these principles. Just to repeat myself, the current program, the BDCP, doesn't satisfy either of these principles. Very briefly, I'm going to show you my own idea. As I said at the outset, I'm not particularly pushing this idea, I'm pushing any alternative that satisfies these two basic principles. So far, I haven't heard of another one, so I'm going to talk very briefly about my own, which is that instead of having intakes on the Sacramento River in the North Delta, we would convert Sherman Island, which is 90% owned by the state already, into a four bay, and take water into it through new permeable embankments, which would be like the world's largest fish screens. This, the downside of this scheme is that that isn't a critical area for fish passage, and since that's one of the goals is to improve the life expectancy particularly of listed species, we want to be very careful about the way we take water out. As a result of a series of discussions, my colleagues and I came with, up with this idea of building new permeable embankments to replace the levees through which water would be drawn. Then the water would be sucked out by pumps at the bottom of Sherman Island, taken by tunnels down to the vicinity of the Clifton Court four bay, and temporarily stored as necessary in a new reservoir at Rushy Creek and an enlargement of the Los Verkaras reservoir. The reason that you need that temporary storage is that in very wet winters, we want to take advantage of both taking water out at Sherman Island and using the existing South Bay pumps. If the South Bay pumps are putting water down the aqueducts, you have to have some way to temporarily store the water from Sherman Island. Without going through all of the details, the goal is to have a system that enables you to take out up to eight to 10 million acre feet a year, which is more than the sixth average that even the exporters are looking for, so that the surplus can be used to replenish groundwater, and that is the piggy bank in which you, you save water for drought periods. So as I have been invited to talk about this scheme to various people, the general reaction is, boy, this makes sense. Why isn't the Governor and the authorities studying this plan? And the answer, the short answer is that the BDCP is the creature of the water exporters who are sort of on a particular track. It has a lot of problems that may just bring it to a halt, it may go over a cliff, but in the meantime, because of the response that I've got from a wide range of people, including San Joaquin Valley farmers, Delta farmers, people involved in Delta recreation, I think it's appropriate to urge the Governor sooner rather than later to open up his thinking to a wider range of alternatives that benefit not just one particular group of lobbyists, but benefit everyone. The advantage of this scheme is that there is no one that takes a hit. It's intended to help the Delta and to help the water exporters, both. I've probably taken too much time already, if, if there, I always say if there are easy questions, I'd be happy to address them.
If we're, just one real quick question. If we're storing all the water up here, is there excess that still would go down to Southern California? Is that what you're saying? We save the excess that we're going to need, but the rest of it would flow down to Southern California?
Yes. This local storage is just necessary to make the plumbing work to get more water taken out in wet years. The additional storage would be down in the San Joaquin Valley, principally in groundwater banks. There's a very large volume of, of what technically we call pore space that's just sitting there because groundwater has been drawn down to as much as 800 or 1,000 feet in some areas. That's a serious problem in itself. So it would be in the interest of everyone to use that, that groundwater overdraft as storage. The farmers would then be able to pump from shallower depths. That's, it's a, a solution that's just sitting there asking to be used.
Thank you.
You mentioned San Joaquin County and the Delta, and Delta farmers. Are there formal organizations that, that have come out and supported this concept or this alternative?
I'm not sure that there are any organizations as such. There are a number of individuals, including a couple of San Joaquin County supervisors, but what I have found talking to various groups is that individually and privately, they say, "This is a great idea." But collectively through the organization, they're all a little bit afraid to buck the The Governor is strong-willed in his own way, but he's also allied with, with interests that have been pushing a particular solution for some years. The oddity of the situation is that I think my solution, or a solution like this, a solution that complies with my two principles, would actually serve the interests better, serve the interests of particularly San Joaquin Valley farmers better than the plan that some of them are reluctant to give up. Again, I can't name individuals, but I've had meetings with individuals that have said, "You need to keep plugging away at this. The Governor needs to hear this." But it's impolitic for me to criticize the existing plan.
So there is no storage at all under the existing plan, is what you're saying?
No, zero. When people like Jeff Kaidlinger, the General Manager of Metropolitan Water District, have been asked about that, he's been blunt and accurate in saying, "We don't need storage." That in fact is true of Metropolitan Water District, who've put in place a lot of storage over the last 15 years, sort of under the radar. They've done a very good job. I mean, all, all these people are not, they're not completely stupid. And so Metropolitan, these other agencies have good engineers who've done some good things. Metropolitan has the storage, they're more interested in water quality. The people who don't have the storage are San Joaquin Valley farmers, more than just Westlands and Kern County Water Agency, but they're the two big groups who are now in this awkward position of still, still supporting a scheme that really doesn't solve their problems.
Thank you.
Any more questions, anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your attention.
So we have action here?
It's really at the discretion of the council, it's on the agenda if any member does in fact want to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, if the council still supports issuing the letter, unless it's approved by council.
Second?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye. Campion? Yeah, question? The motion says, "Consider letter of support for the alternative to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan." I, I would be, I think, more inclined to support an alternative, even as the Speaker said, that this is, this is just his alternative. So the alternative is water conservation and storage, I think was his key point. So, the alternative is water conservation and storage, I think was his key point. So, I think that, I would be more comfortable with an amended, amended motion.
So, essentially, the recommendation would be that the council direct staff could prepare a letter, the mayor's signature, that would asking the governor to consider an alternative plan to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan that would address the two principles that Dr. Pike mentioned in his presentation.
Such as one, this one plan.
Yeah, those, the additional storage and the natural flows through the Delta.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do we vote on the amendment first? Okay. I second the amendment. Call for the vote, please.
On which?
The amendment.
Okay. Are you withdrawing yours, though? Because you have two.
We don't need to withdraw. The amended motion can be voted on.
Ready to call for vote? Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Thank you, Kurt, for bringing that to the point.
Now, do we call for the vote for the, okay, cool. Sorry, I get a little confused sometimes. So, now we're into the community of character, and I'm pretty sure that's Sue Roberts.
There she is.
Okay. The first person that we're recognizing tonight is Winona Cassidy, and I would like to read the description of why she was nominated. Winona Cassidy is that quiet person who is always there to help those in need, no matter what their need is. Whether it is for someplace to live for a while, or for a hundred and fifty people who need a Christmas meal, or just the opportunity to share the season with others, Winona will be there. For the second year, Winona put together a Christmas dinner for those who need to have a meal in company and to not be alone. She is there to give to the community in any way that is possible, such as helping with the extravaganza or any other community event that needs someone to help out. She does this because she cares, and she never seems to tire when there is work to be done. Personally, I know if I need help to do anything, she's always there for me. If I have a youth that needs help for whatever reason, she will help. Her heart is so big, I don't know how it sits in her small frame. Her caring and compassion never seem to end. The community of Galt is a better place because of her. And obviously, I'm the one that nominated her.
Congratulations, Winona. Thank you for having us here again tonight and taking the time to do this. Just one little quick thing. I was here earlier today, and I walked out the front after, when I left, and here was a truck, a panel truck parked out, and it was, had a name on it, Integrity and Honesty Painting. And I thought, whoa, maybe things are catching on here in Galt finally, huh? Then I looked at the telephone number. Sorry, but it was a Sacramento number. But anyway, there's a company by the name of Integrity and Honesty Painting around. I'm here to give an award, and this is again for caring and compassion, to Kathy Carrington. Kathy, are you here? Come on up. And also, Fatima, you've nominated her, so come on up. I'd like to read the narrative on this one, the nomination. Kathy Carrington is a person who continuously demonstrates her gift of caring and compassion for others in our community. As an example, when she found out that one of her neighbors had financial problems, Kathy contacted her friends and neighbors and organized a garage sale. The neighbors were generous with the items donated, and the garage sale collected a good amount of money to give to the family in need. Kathy also helps neighbors in need of childcare. Recently, one of her friends got sick, and Kathy brought her home to take care of her. Kathy also celebrates the holidays by opening her home to friends and neighbors. Kathy is a captain for the Neighborhood Watch Program. She communicates well with their neighbors to keep the neighborhood a safe place to live and raise children. Kathy Carrington is a true model of caring and compassion and a real asset to the Galt community. She was nominated by Fatima Loops. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. And congratulations to you two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you, Sue. Okay, public comment.
Yeah. I was on to. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. I have no speaker sheets right now.
Okay, you have sheets for other issues. So, as your items come up, we will give you a call. So, now we're on to the information and consent calendar. And Councilmember Payne, do you want to discuss five and eight?
Do you want me to go first, or do you want to take number four first?
Well, you went first, so it doesn't matter to me.
Right. On item number five, which was the fiscal year, second quarter update, I had a number of questions, which I had emailed to Inez, and she answered them. But I thought this was so important that we need to share it with the public. There were some areas in our revenue, our general fund, that was going to be less than we expected, and it concerned me. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Inez to give a brief report on it.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and community members. This evening, staff is recommending that you accept the informational report. Excuse me, I'm trying to recover from a cold, so. I have some here, thank you, but I just wanted to convey that. Anyway, so I wanted to bring you up to date on our revenue expenditures. I will cover general fund and the cultural recreation fund and talk a little bit about significant variances in some of the other funds. So, I'll probably do that very briefly. In the general fund, our revenue should be at fifty percent of budget, and we're currently at a twenty-five percent. That's primarily due to property taxes, which makes up about forty-six percent of our general fund revenues. We only receive one advance in the first quarter, in the first six months, and it happens in December. So, we expect that those amounts will be low. But we've also taken a look at some of the information that we received from the county assessor's office. And I had originally estimated that about half of our properties within the city would go up by the two percent increase. As it turns out, as the county assessor's office actually goes back out and assesses homes based on a sale that may happen in the area, it looks like there's actually going to be a decrease. It's called propate reductions, and it actually affects over fifty-two hundred parcels in our community. That's huge. It's the largest one we've had. A year ago, it was about thirty-seven hundred parcels. That actually turns out to affect our property tax projections of about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, that is an estimate that we will be expecting to make an amendment during the upcoming budget process. So, it looks like our revenues will actually go down about four percent on our assessed valuation. On the good side, though, we have noticed that, we have red reports, we have heard news about economy coming back when, as it relates to property taxes. And what we're seeing is that the amount of foreclosures are actually decreasing. We went from about four hundred in two thousand eight to just about two hundred in two thousand eleven. So, that is positive news. So, we expect that eventually, we'll start to see an uptick. But unfortunately, it's not going to happen in the current fiscal year with regard to property taxes. On, we do expect that that shortfall will be made up under the redevelopment, under some residual payments coming back, which are part of the property tax increment. We actually received a payment today of just over two hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, we think that will have no negative impact to the general fund, but it is because there's a decrease in assessed value under the property taxes, as well as an increase in some residual payments from what was previously known as redevelopment agency money. On sales tax, we did see a decrease of about seventeen percent over the quarter from the prior quarter. The prior quarter actually had some double up on some payments. We do believe that the budgeted amounts are still attainable, so we're not recommending changes. There was a seventeen percent reduction, decrease, but we still believe that the amounts are attainable with regard to sales tax. Those are the two areas that had the most significant variances in the general fund. On the expenditure side, we should have approximately fifty percent available for expenditure. And as it turns out, we're just at about forty-seven percent. So, we have about fifty-three percent available for expenditure. So, we're pretty close to being on target. So, nothing surprising really under the expenditure side. In the cultural recreation fund revenues, the majority of our revenues come from the Galt market. We're at about forty-eight percent of collection, so we're a little bit behind. But we expect, again, that our revenues can be made up over the next couple of months to come up. We seem to see a big uptick during the spring break as well. So, we're not recommending any changes to the revenues in the cultural recreation fund. Again, on the expenditure side, we do see that they have approximately forty-six percent, with fifty percent available for expenditure. So, they're within their budgeted amounts as well on the expenditure side. A couple of questions that Councilmember Payne mentioned were on the enterprise fund. With regard to service charges, all of them are pretty close to the budgeted amount. There are a couple of grants, though, that we have not received, and that's contingent upon expenditure of some of those projects. So, in order to receive reimbursement of those revenues, those grants expenditures have to occur, and some of those projects have not even been initiated. So, that's why those are low. That's true also in some of the gas tax and transportation funds. Two specifically, we have two million budgeted in the RSTP, Regional Surface Transportation Program, and that's a reimbursement as well. And there's also a SHOP grant, which stands for State Highway Operations and Protection Program. And those two projects are reimbursement based, and it basically addresses for projects on the Central Valley Corridor project and the Twin Cities Roundabout. I think that's actually one of the items that is being considered this evening or recently approved. So, again, expenditures have not been made, and so revenues have not been submitted for reimbursement. Measure R, good news there, is that our sales, our use is trailing. Our city sales at about sixty-nine percent. We budget at about fifty-eight percent. So, definitely good news there for Measure R. And again, Measure R covers the cost for seven foreign officers, one of them which is grant funded, and the field operations and two dispatchers. I know that we do have some vacancies, but again, there are sufficient times to help us out through that funding program. Impact fees, we know that there was one building permit issued in one single-family dwelling unit, and that was in the month of October.
Take a bow, Mike.
Not in the quarter I'm looking at. Definitely good news. But it was disappointing, our impact fees are definitely related to our development in our city, and there was just that one single-family dwelling unit that was, permit that was pulled in the month of October. No surprises in impact fees. We are within estimated amounts. And the COPA AB3229, we budget a hundred thousand dollars coming. We just received information today that we should receive our first advance, about thirty-seven thousand. Again, a hundred thousand is still estimated to be received. We haven't received anything yet, but as of today, we expect a thirty-seven thousand dollar advance. Redevelopment agency, staff members continue to work with consultants, auditors, and everybody else here, attorneys, just about every other city staff member working on the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. So, with that, I would ask that you accept the informational report. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address it this evening.
I just want to say thank you for going through that. I know that you're not feeling well, but I think this is such a sensitive time when it comes to money, that we all want to be kept up with the situation. And the bottom line, the response that I got was that we still look okay. It's not, even though we had some decreases in revenue, we still feel comfortable with our reserves and everything.
We don't, we're not.
Correct.
That is correct. We will be making adjustments to some actual line items, but we do believe that overall, that there's not a significant impact to any of the funds at this point.
All right. Thank you. Again, I hope you feel better really soon. Should I go to the next item? The next item is number eight, approval of proposed salary range and job description for senior plant maintenance mechanic. This is on consent calendar. We have another similar thing coming up, which is on the regular discussion. So, I just asked Paula if she would talk about it just a little bit so that the public knows what we're doing and that we're trying to stay within our means as far as the salaries that we're paying. So, Paula?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. The reason this is on consent is because the position was requested by Public Works during the last budget process, and it's approved in our current budget. And what it is, we basically changed the water position into a proposed senior plant maintenance mechanic position. So, tonight, after I worked with the Public Works Department, and they've provided a lot of information and backup supporting this, we are proposing the salary range and the job description just to, you know, firm everything up from the budget, and then we can go ahead and open the recruitment. But regarding the salary, and I know that was a question that you had, is how we go about setting a salary is first looking at the job description and talking to departments and finding out really what the position does, and making sure I have a clear understanding of what, you know, where this falls in the level of responsibility. Then I'll go out to our comparator cities and find if they, you know, try to find if they have similar positions and see what they're paying. And that's exactly what I did with this position. Did a pretty quick salary survey and kind of see where it fits. And this, this falls right in the middle of our highest and lowest comparator city from the comps I could find. But in addition to that, we also look at internal equity because we want to make sure that positions are paid, you know, similar positions are paid similarly in our city. So, that's another, you know, consideration. So, I hope that answers your questions, and if you have any.
And you had emailed me your answers, too. But again, I just felt like it was something the public needed to share and see what a good job you did. So, thank you.
Hey, Mark?
I wouldn't move both of those items for approval. Can we move both, or do I need to? One's just information.
There's no reason to have taken action on number five, but it would be appropriate to move item eight at this time.
Okay. The recommended action is to approve the proposed title and job description for the position of senior plant maintenance mechanic and adopt the resolution approving the proposed Galt Public Service Unit's salary schedule reflecting the new position. So, Barbara, you moved?
I did.
Glad you have it. Okay, it's Mike's second. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Cruz, the number four.
Real quick, I just had two questions. After reading your review on this, Inez, how many times have we overrun those accounts with the credit card, number one? And number two, is that going to be sufficient, an increase?
We seem to be going over individual card limits. What happens is the cards are actually issued to an individual employee. In years past, we used to have the card issued to the finance department or to the department, so it could say administration. And we would have a pool of, say, five thousand dollars for that department. When we changed over, F and M actually changed over to Visa, they said, "Well, we couldn't issue it to department. It had to be issued to an individual employee." So, then we would say five hundred dollars limit for that employee or a thousand dollars. So, we do see where that does happen. I will receive a call. I'll have to make a phone call because I'm an authorized user to say, "Can you take it from the pool? Can you shift it from my card for, you know, for the next seventy-two hours and assign it to somebody else?" So, it does happen quite frequently. The dollar amount that we're recommending, we actually did an analysis of the dollar values that were used. And we feel that the amount that the department, number one, recommended, we felt comfortable in supporting their recommendation based on the usage pattern over the last twelve months. So, we feel that the amount that is being presented from the thirty thousand to the forty-five thousand is definitely within an acceptable range for us. So, I would not recommend a higher amount at this time.
And that's for a number of credit cards, right? Not just for one credit card?
There's, yeah, it is. The number of credit cards will not increase or be issued. There will be one, that's a generic now, will be used for the finance department. So, again, we went back and contacted the Visa company, and they said, "Oh, no, you can go ahead and issue it back under a department. You don't have to." But we do have to have something that's authorized. So, there was a change there. So, then we So there was a change there, so then we felt comfortable in issuing one to the department. So if there was something that was out of the ordinary, a couple of events happened in the recent month that we felt that maybe we should just issue to the finance department, we could check it out to an employee with the department head's approval and kind of just continue operations. But we felt this was a good recommendation. We did ask for input from all department heads, they felt comfortable with this recommendation, and I think it's going to serve their needs as well as the rest of the departments in the cities.
So we won't have to worry about any more overruns?
Well, we hope not. I mean, departments are put on notice, they know what their limit is, hopefully they will track it based on the usage. It seems to be a limit that they can live with, that works for their departments.
Okay. Thank you. Move to accept.
Call for the vote, please. Oh, should we read it first? Okay. Adopt a resolution authorizing the addition of one Visa charge account and an increase of $15,000 to the charge account, so that the aggregate amount does not exceed $45,000. We have moved to seconded. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, would you like to read the rest of them?
I'll just, your card will be good.
Okay, we have nine items minus the few we've talked about. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings at December 18th, 2012, and the special meeting of January 22nd, 2013. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending November 2012. We discussed number four and five. Number six, capital improvement program status update, July to December 31, 2012. Number seven, 2013 Independence Day celebration. We discussed number eight. And number nine, approval of the proclamation recognizing February 7th through the 14th, that's been genital heart defect awareness week. So do I have a motion?
Move to the remaining.
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to scheduled matters, and the subject is the ordinance establishing development agreement procedures, and that goes to Ms. Sandy Caru. Hear you?
Thank you, and good evening. We had a study session at 5:30 this afternoon, so City Council has already heard the long version of this presentation. I'm going to hit just the highlights for members of the audience who may be interested. Very basically, a development agreement is a completely discretionary negotiated contract between a city or county and a developer. The intent of a development agreement is to provide mutually negotiated security for both sides. Typically, the local agency gets a legally binding promise that a developer will provide certain public benefits. Often, those are above and beyond what can constitutionally be required by the city under general planning law. And the developer gets a legal promise that he or she could build the project without worrying about subsequent changes in the rules of the game, such as a change in zoning standards or a fee increase. And I won't go into it, but that's all based on the fact that California has a late vesting rights statute. The government code states that public agencies must adopt procedures for processing development agreements if requested to do so by a developer. In this case, there has been no such request from any development interest. This was simply staff's suggestion to bring this forward, so that we have these procedures in place. As the economy improves, hopefully we can take advantage of development agreements. The attached ordinance that's before you sets forth the required contents of development agreements, how they would be processed and adopted, how they'd be monitored for compliance, and how they can be amended or canceled. The key points are outlined in your staff report, that's also available online. I will touch on them very quickly. Development agreements are adopted like any legislative act, such as a rezone. It requires public notices, public hearings before the Planning Commission and the City Council, a second reading before the City Council, and then they're effective 30 days after adoption. Unless otherwise negotiated in the development agreement, the applicable rules, regulations, and policies that are locked in are those that are enforced at the time the agreement is executed. The project must be determined to be consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan, and must also comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. The city can negotiate for extra public dedication, fees, or improvements than would otherwise be constitutional under general law. Because it's a legislative act, development agreements are subject to referendum, and the city can enter into a development agreement for land outside the city limits within our sphere of influence, but it will not become operative until the property is annexed into the city. And lastly, the agreement must be monitored annually by city staff to ensure compliance with all the terms and conditions of the development agreement. For an application process, staff has developed a very simple application form. For the fee, staff is recommending that no application fee be imposed. The reason for that is that we feel that because they provide benefits to the city, or we wouldn't be interested in entering into an agreement, if we were to collect a fee, we think that the benefit would simply be reduced by the amount of that fee. So we would recommend that there be no application fee. However, there could be circumstances in which a project did not otherwise require public notice and public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council. In those cases, we would require that the developer pay the hard costs of those public notices. Otherwise, if it was a rezone and a subdivision map, they would pay those application fees, the development agreement would simply accompany those entitlements through the process. And likewise, the cost for sequel compliance will be the requirement of the developer. The Planning Commission considered the adoption of this ordinance at their notice public hearing on January 10th of this year, and unanimously recommended that City Council approve or introduce the ordinance as presented. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Second?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the fee issue, I understand what you're saying, but my concern is that, well, let me back up. Who's drafting the initial version of the agreement? Will that be the city?
The city will do that. We will develop a template that will be used.
Okay, so there will be a template in place?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. Because my concern is that if the template's in place, then that makes more sense that there wouldn't necessarily be a fee or just a minimal amount. I guess my concern is that if it goes into protracted negotiations or multiple drafts, that at some point there'd be a line drawn where, after the second or third draft, then any staff time devoted towards those negotiations, I think should be recovered by the city. I mean, that's, I don't see that as unreasonable, and I wouldn't want to see, you know, negotiations going on for months at a time. Maybe you see them one month, and then you don't see somebody for another two or three months. So I think you should incorporate some sort of timeframe by which these either negotiations either conclude, or you stop working on the project, something. But I'm not sure how you would approach that, but I just, I do have a concern there.
Well, because development agreements are completely optional for the city to enter into, I think at any time, we could indicate that, you know, at this point, we feel we need to recover some of the costs if we felt it was being extraordinarily a burden to the city.
Okay. The other point I'd like to make is that in section 176030 of the ordinance, in Part C, it says that the capital shall pay such fees and charges for the filing and processing of the agreement in amounts that may be established by resolution of the City Council. So if this ordinance is adopted in the future, if the council's desire or if our experience is such that a formal fee needs to be adopted, this ordinance provides the mechanism for the council to adopt the resolution with that fee in place?
In the, maybe I didn't see it in here, but in the case of amendments or cancellations of the agreements, there are two different sections. One deals with minor modifications and mutual consent. What would be defined as a minor amendment? You know, it's just by way of example, if you could think of anything.
Which item is that? What number?
It's almost on, second to the last page of the ordinance. It just talks about minor amendments by mutual consent. I'm just not sure what that would be.
Typical example of a minor amendment would be if, for example, if a development agreement had a schedule for performance, and there was a modification in some of the timing of performance without changing the actual project components, that would be an example of a minor modification.
Possibly the ownership interest or something like that as well would be a minor modification if someone else wanted to take over the project, or additional partners were brought in.
Okay. And then lastly, it says, I know that the, there's a recorded notice done once the agreement is executed. If it is canceled, I suspect you would also have to record a notice of sorts. Is that correct? I didn't see that in here, and I don't know if it really matters.
Yes. If at the time of cancellation, or when the agreement turns out, then there would be notice to release of the agreement.
Okay. So I have-
Okay, I failed to see that this, we need to public, see if there's any public comments on this, but I'm going to open it up for public comment, if anyone has anything they'd like to say regarding this issue. Mr. Guttridge?
Mike Gutridge, General Park. I mean, yes, we are, we're moving forward down there in our fine subdivision. We got about three or four houses, looks like we're going to be going and building. We'll be coming in for permits and that'll help that bottom line a little bit. Anyway, you said in the 5:30 meeting that something about a one-house rule, and I'm still concerned about what that meant. We're talking about that if we were doing this, and you would have to have at least one house involved before this would come into effect. Was that just maybe, or?
I think possibly you might be referring to the fact that in a situation where there's not a development agreement, that you had a, for example, a hundred-lot subdivision, you pulled one building permit, that would vest your right to develop that one house without additional fees. Was that what it was about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because I'm sort of concerned, as you know, we got a subdivision sitting up there on East Stockton Boulevard that we've had for, what are we, three years, four years, Kurt? Sandy?
The senior one?
Four years, and so now, with that said, I presume, under the state law, we're still in good standings with the City of Galt. Unit 22?
Park Creek Village, is that what you're referring to? Yeah. Yes, I would have to check, we checked probably six months ago, and everybody was in good standing, and I think you're still fine.
So under that, we don't have to worry about this one-house rule or anything. We're still in good standing. When we are ready to come forward with our tenancy map, then we should be able to go forward without any problems?
Well, you have an approved tenancy map now.
Yes.
It's still valid. It's just the final map that you would obtain.
Right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone else that would like to speak? And then I'm going to close the public comment, and I'm going to read what we- The recommendation? Yes, please. Introduce an ordinance, waive the first reading, and read by title only. An ordinance adding Chapter 17.60 of the Galt Municipal Code Regarding Development Agreement Procedures. Anybody want to?
So move.
Hey, anybody? Okay. I'll pass to me. Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Let me read the next. There was the city manager's office, correct? Ready? We'll read that's the next. Economy Regional Prosperity Plan.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my pleasure to present this item for you this evening. Back in August 2011, business leadership in the Sacramento region got together, which involved the Sacramento Metro Chamber, Sacramento Area Commerce and Trade Organization, Altona Sacto, Sacramento Regional Technology Alliance, SARDA, and Valley Vision, launched this Next Economy initiative. And essentially, it's an initiative to bring the entire region together, focus on common economic development goals, to collaborate more than compete with one another, to bring in certain types of industry, and focus our energy in order to bring job-producing businesses into this region. So the concern was not so much where they located in the Sacramento region, but just that they locate here, from either developing the industry that we already had here, and seeing that that industry grew, or bringing in additional industry from outside the area as well. And so it was an initiative that was started largely by these organizations, but it has grown and incorporates government, so organizations, and other nonprofits, and regional leaders in order to get this off the ground. In August 2012, Steering Committee of this group approved the executive summary of the Next Economy Plan, a copy of which is attached to the staff report. The plan identifies five overarching goals for the Next Economy Plan, and a unified vision for achieving the objectives and strategies underpinning the goals. The implement, the full implementation plan is still under development, but I understand it's getting close to being able to be presented. They were hoping for the first quarter of 2013. So the Steering Committee is going to various organizations and government organizations and asking for affirmative support and an endorsement of this effort. The recommendation tonight is that you adopt a resolution endorsing the Next Economy Regional Prosperity Plan, authorize city managers to actively engage in shaping, implementing the plan, integrated into the city's own economic development efforts. Dennis Rogers with SAC Metro Chamber is here this evening, I believe, to maybe brief the council a little bit more on those five goals, kind of where the Steering Committee is in the plan, and what to expect over the coming months. Dennis, why don't you come on up?
Good evening. I'm Dennis Rogers with Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Senior Vice President for Public Policy and Economic Development, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the four partners that Ms. Berman had talked about, Sacto, SARDA, Valley Vision, and ourselves, to ask for your endorsement of the Next Economy Regional Prosperity Plan. The one thing that I wanted to just underscore, which is, we think is the most important thing for us to start off our discussion with, is that this is a regional approach to economic development with local implementation. So it's very important for us as a regional chamber to highlight that, meaning that we have assets, we have opportunities for growth within the region, but the City of Galt will implement this differently than the City of Yuba City, than the City of Colfax, than the City of Folsom. But what, as your city manager indicated, we're hoping is we're going to have a regional playbook that will have local implementation, so that when we go out and we recruit folks from outside the region, that we're saying, move to the Capital Region, locate here. Once they make a decision, if Galt is one site, Folsom is one site, and Yuba City is another site, at that point, the three communities, once they made a decision to locate here, would enter into competition to be able to bring the company to your jurisdiction, which is a very important underpinning of this regional approach. Again, as your city manager indicated, I have, I don't know if you have color copies, I thought I'd bring color copies, because it's always nice to see things that way. I've brought enough copies for all of you. If you look at the second page, we have a unified vision. Number one is that at the end of the five-year implementation plan, we would be a sought-after place for business growth, investment, and entrepreneurship. Two, desirable place for a quality workforce and young professionals to live, study, work, play, and contribute. And three, diverse economy renowned for its core business clusters and driven in large part by export activity. The reason why I want to highlight number three is export activity is the important aspect of economic development, because that's how you generate wealth, and that's how you generate jobs. You take something, you add value to it, you export it to another place, and they in turn return money to you. That's how you grow wealth within a region, and that's why we want to focus on that. The goals for this are we foster a strong innovation environment, amplify the region's global market transactions, that's another way of saying, look at exports, diversify the economy through growth and support of core business clusters, focus on the strengths that we already have, and then grow and maintain a world-class talent base, and then improve the regional business climate for economic growth. If you look at the Capital Region Core Business Clusters on Page Three, the bottom right-hand corner of Page Three, advanced manufacturing, which I heard discussed earlier, agriculture and food, clean energy technology, education and knowledge creation, information communications technology, and life science in the health service. education and knowledge creation, information communications technology and life science in the health services.
Dennis, can I interrupt you before you move on?
Absolutely.
Uh, for example, I'm on the cluster of agriculture and food.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we haven't really gotten into the implementation yet.
Correct.
And that will come back, correct, the whole implementation plan. Um, I've been to about three or four meetings already regarding this and I'm wondering, number one, um, is this project gonna require funding? I know it's mostly volunteers, but usually you have to have some staff involved. Uh, so are we gonna be looking for funding at some time in the future?
Yes.
We are.
Yeah, and, and, and at this point, um, one of the things that we want to be very clear on, uh, is that we believe this is a private sector-driven, um, initiative, um, which is in order to create wealth, uh, you have to have private sector activity. And we're in the process, the implementation part of it has a governance structure available, uh, uh, the governance structure discussion happening at the same time. Because you can have a plan and then the implementation plan is the next side of it, the strategic plan, there's a plan, a plan, a plan. But you have to transition that into how are you actually going to implement this and make it happen? Because I'm sure that you've all been involved with other plans in other aspects of your lives where they look really pretty, they were in color. Um, and you put them on the shelf and then you kind of didn't do anything with them. So there are two aspects of this that I think are incredibly important. One is again, the overarching issue is, okay, how do we have a regional plan that has local implementation? What is happening right now is they're drafting what are called teaming agreements. And the teaming agreements are for any, um, organization, and I'll use that broadly defined, both public and private civic, as well as, um, municipal corporations like yourselves, that you would enter into a teaming agreement where we would sign the equivalent of an MOU amongst all the partners in this and you would say, we're going to do X. Now, the next step of the governance, um, structure is, okay, how do we have someone in place that makes sure that we're categorizing all of this and following up with people and then making sure that we have some level of accountability? That's the part that we're in the process of finishing up right now and then adding that layer to the implementation plan and that's the area where we're gonna need some level of funding. Because we're gonna have to have people that are working full-time on this. At this point, the CEOs and the staffs of the Metro Chamber, Valley Vision, SACDO and SARDA have funded this and have, have moved forward and we've done the fundraising to do that. The next step is, okay, now that we're gonna do this regionally, how do we make sure that there's actually some, some there there? And it's not just a nice discussion that's put on a shelf. We wanted to get that done in the first quarter of two thousand and thirteen. We're still striving for that, but it's taking a little bit longer for us to do that because we're trying to work through some of these issues to make sure that there is an accountability measure so that the words on the paper don't stay the words on the paper, but actually become jobs. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do is create jobs.
And, and that's kind of what I'm asking for. I've, like I said, been to about three of these meetings already and, uh, there's a lot of talk going on, but we haven't really gotten into a plan for implementation. And I guess I hear what you're saying is that's coming next. And will that be decided in these, uh, cluster groups, the implementation plan, or how will that happen?
So, you know, that's an interesting question. And so the answer to that, I think, is a bit more nuanced and complex than I would, um, like to be able to answer. I'd like to be able to say definitive that this is what's gonna happen. But part of doing this from a regional perspective with local implementation is we're gonna need, as your city manager's requested, the city of Galt to look at the research and to say what you're gonna do and then come forward and say, here's what we're gonna do. And then it's the aggregation of all these different things that start the implementation plan. We will have a skeleton, if you will, of an implementation plan. It's a starter place. But at the end of the day, one of the things that we're very leery of doing, and in fact, my boss, Mr. Nilo, the president and CEO, will not be a part of, is to come down here and walk into your chambers and say, here's what you guys need to do. You know, ours is we've done research and the research is the easiest way to grow, or to, to create jobs is to grow them. Importing jobs, especially into California because of our business climate, um, is difficult. And so if you have a company that's already here, what can we do to help that company grow jobs here? And so our message to you is the same thing, which is how do we, from a regional perspective, work together with local implementation? So that you're able to say, of the forty-seven things here, we're gonna do number one, number thirteen, number twenty-eight and number thirty-two. Right? And so that, so it's, it's, it's a more complicated discussion to get to implementation. It's a more complicated discussion to get to governance. But we believe at the end of the day, there are two things that come out of it. One, sustainability of the, of, of the process and durability. So we think it'll last longer and it will be stronger because of the way that we're approaching it versus a top-down model that says thou must do this.
Right. So would you say that it's important that, uh, the city of Galt have a person at the table uh, in the, in deciding how the implementation will be done? Now, I have this one little small group that I'm in that's for agriculture, but as you mentioned, there's quite a few others. So how do we get our voice heard on the whole implementation plan?
So, um, as your city manager has indicated in the resolution, he's looking for direction from all of you to be able to come in and then take the, uh, the, the Next Economy, um, executive summary, kind of the outline. So I, I guess the best way to describe what's going on is this is kind of like a computer file, this part of it. You know how you're on your computer and it's got the little triangle next to it and when you click on the triangle, a whole stuff, a bunch of stuff drops underneath it? Well, this is one plan. On the website is the strategic plan and that's the equivalent of hitting the little triangle and it has a whole bunch of implementation measures on it that we're talking about. On the implementation plan, again, it comes back to where you guys want to put your energy in. You may want to be in ag and food and advanced manufacturing and not anything else. Right? So then you're gonna concentrate on that in your direction to your city manager and your staff and your fellow council members providing that up are gonna be focused in on what's important to Galt. What we're trying to do is using the regional approach, we're trying to say, as a region, here are our strengths. We spent a year, a lot of money on, on economic activity and research to find out what we can do to grow them and be honest about that. You know, it, it would be, it would be wonderful if we, if we could actually have the same level of venture capital that exists in Palo Alto, for example. Uh, it's not gonna happen. But we have a lot of healthcare, we have advanced manufacturing and we have the capacity to export agricultural products that actually have, uh, an option to be able to put value on that, export them and bring wealth back. So those are the areas that we think we need to concentrate on. So my answer to you, Councilmember Payne, is that we believe that you guys have to decide for yourself where you want to engage and then actively engage in that. And, and that's the way that we've set this up. It's not set up that you have to be everything to everyone. It's, Galt is gonna be unique to Galt within the regional framework.
Yeah, I think then my statement would be if we as a city are going to endorse this, we also have to be committed as a council and city manager to be participating in it. Because once our name, the city of Galt goes on there as a endorsement or a sponsor, then, uh, we're, we're saying that to everybody else, to all the people that you're gonna be asking to help actually fund this, that the city of Galt is, um, indeed in favor of what, you know, where we go with it. So, um...
And we're very hopeful that you will and, and what we're striving for is by the end of this month, at the latest, the middle of next month, um, is to have all of the local jurisdictions, all the public jurisdictions, cities and counties, within kind of the service territory, which is akin to the SA-COG, um, uh, polygon, endorse this. Because we want to send a message regionally, both internally and externally, that we've come to a conclusion that we can, that we will compete regionally because that's really where the economic development game is today. Um, but that we also recognize and that we celebrate our individuality as communities and that we're gonna give ourselves that option to be able to do what is necessary. So what you guys choose to do is to endorse it, that doesn't mean that you have to do everything on it. You have to do what is unique to Galt and what you feel you can do. And the teaming agreements are set up to say, okay, if you've, if you've chosen on your own to implement this portion of it, here's the accountability measure we jointly agree to implement.
Well, I just want to say that I wouldn't be going to all these meetings if I didn't think it was, wasn't a good idea. I just wanted to be sure that the city of Galt is ready to also commit to it if we're gonna put our name on there saying that we, we do sponsor and endorse it. So I wanted to have this conversation, um, in front of everybody to see how they feel about it. So that answers my question, Dennis. Thank you.
And then one of the things that I think is always important, um, that I have been taught for a very long time, whenever you approach the dieces, you always ask. And so we're here, um, respectfully to ask for the five of you to vote, uh, to endorse the Next Economy Plan and, and we will respectfully, um, ask your support of the resolution in front of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Um, I have one. Uh, I have a little bit of, uh, just of a concern of how you've got a steering committee.
Correct.
Um, do you have another, would you have a committee below that that were each of the cities are representative? If, if we're just gonna say we're gonna do part of it, how are we gonna know what the other hand is doing?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, you would have a steering committee, then you would have a committee with all the cities on it to talk about their differences and the things that are, um, their differences and what's the other word? The things that are, yeah, some, thank you. You know, their differences and their similarities. So if they're not all engaged
Correct.
and you're just each doing little parts, how is that really helping the sum of the whole?
And that's what the teaming agreements are for, so that it outlines that. And Laura Gill, the city manager of the city of Elk Grove, has been actively involved with our group to help us formulate these documents. And that is the next step of the governance, which is, okay, there are multi-layers. So we're gonna be looking at the clusters because the clusters, which are different industry types, are the ones where we're gonna be able to grow jobs. So that's one aspect of it. We need to encourage those folks to be able to talk together and to be able to do that. Your example, which is all of the different various cities and counties, are gonna be incredibly important because one of the five goals is to make sure that we have a regulatory environment that is conducive to not only the quality of life that all of us enjoy in the Sacramento region, but also business empowerment. And so nowhere in there are we saying that we want to just, you know, run roughshod over the regulatory environment. We want to make sure that, that there is an ROI for people who want to deploy capital in this region, but it has to be within the quality of life that we enjoy. Those are all the complexities because they all don't naturally meet. Because there may be an industry sector that's not as well-developed in Folsom as it is in Galt and therefore you're gonna be more concerned about that and so there's some complexities of that. And so your question about how you get all the cities together, there is, there is a forum to be able to talk about that, that you, that all of you have. Uh, SA-COG is one of those places where you have some of those discussions. Sometimes you agree on how you work things out, sometimes you don't. We would look at, through the governance structure, through the teaming agreements, on how we make sure that the communication, what happens over here in one of these vertical clusters, the communication is out horizontally to everyone who might be concerned about that. And that's the process we're going through and that's part of the implementation plan is to make sure that you as the mayor, Mayor Powers, of the city of Galt are fully informed of everything that's going on so that you, as one of the leaders of, of the city of Galt, can report back to your constituents, here's how we're trying to make this thing work regionally and here's how it impacts Galt.
Well, but by working together all the cities, if someone came in that had something that didn't relate to our, what we wanted to do, I'm, let's just say they wanted to sell green shamrocks or something, and we knew another city that wanted to. I think that's why it's important that the cities are aware, not just by a piece of paper, I'm sorry, but are aware between communicating and being with each other to know what cities have what to offer.
And that's part of why when, uh, Councilmember Payne asked about staffing, specifically that, is that we need to make sure that there's active communication and there's active forums for every bit, for everyone to be able to talk. And those forums have, are going to be such as just cities getting together, cities and counties. Um, you know, if you kind of break up the region, you've got, you know, kind of the north area, Yuba Sutter and the kind of the ninety-nine. There's the south area of, of the county of Sacramento that involves part, Elk Grove and you and then some commonality with Lodi. There's the Highway fifty corridor that goes up with Ranch Pernova, Folsom, Eldorado Hills. They're all part of the larger region, but there's some commonalities within there that are different in how they approach things. And so our job as the groups that are trying to move this forward are to recognize that and why we have that, this governance structure, is to not just have it be a passive communication of what's going on, but to be active and that there are forums that are set up specifically to have all the folks that are as part of this group formally to have that communication so that we know what's going on. Because you may need help. You, you may have an issue that has come up that someone else has run into and they might be able to help you solve, solve that problem. And so it's a point well taken. I made notes on that. Um, Mayor Powers, and one of the things that we'll follow up with, uh, someone from one of the four groups will follow up with you directly on, is that aspect relative to how are we going to have the public agencies interact together?
Okay, and just one little more thing. Um, this differs from SA-COG where SA-COG kindly makes the blueprint for everybody.
Correct.
But with this, we're making the blueprint for ourselves.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and then the other thing with SA-COG is it's a funding agency for the gas tax money
Right.
and some of that, which
Yeah.
we, we ain't got that, do we?
No, and, but, but what we're hoping to be able to do, yeah. Yeah, but what we're hoping to be able to do is that what we want to do, at the end of the day, this is about growing jobs, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what it boils down to. We need to have a regional approach because that's how economic development is done today. It's not state by state, it's not nation by nation, it's region by region. Um, and we have to have a regional approach that allows us to have local implementation. We believe this does it. We've spent an inordinate amount of time looking at data and what we've tried to be is very realistic on what we have the capacity to be. It's not, you know, there are a lot of things that I wish we could be, you know. I wish we could, you know, uh, end up having, you know, an immense amount of advanced manufacturing that would allow us to export just tons of things that we take raw materials and make components out of because that's how you create wealth. Most likely, given the regulatory environment of the state of California, that's gonna be a toll over. But healthcare is one area that we're, we have a leadership position in the number of areas that we can work with, advanced manufacturing and healthcare. And a lot of the trials that are going on and the companies that are starting that, those are the areas that we need to focus on. Agriculture and food, we think, is one of the areas that we have a great strength and that Galt obviously is, is integral to that. Agriculture is one of those things that we can export, that we can create wealth. We have both commodity crops as well as specialty crops, high-value crops and some of those processing. What do we need to do to make sure that we take advantage of those? And that's what, um, this regional approach with local implementation is about.
Can't the other members of the council, if they, if they are interested in other areas or even if they are interested in the food and ag, which I'm on, can't they participate?
Absolutely.
They have to be invited or?
Absolutely. If, um, I will leave a stack of cards, um, for you. Um, and all you have to do is just have anyone that wants to be, participate in this, contact me and we will make sure that you have the, the right folks contact you to make sure that it's done.
Wow.
Because, um, I, uh, you know, on behalf of my boss and the organization that I represent, I want to make it as easy as possible for everyone to be involved in this. Because at the end of the day, how I review this is I was very fortunate, uh, my wife and I grew up in Southern California and we relocated to this area and we both think we were poor old, um, from Southern California. Um, and this is where both my daughters were born and I'd really like them to be able to come back. I have that father of the bride fantasy, you know, they're gonna come back and they'll get married and some evil awful boy that doesn't deserve them will end up coming into my life. Um, but we're not gonna be able to do that unless we have jobs, unless we have companies that can create jobs and employ people. And that's what this matters. So as many people that want to help us, you know, create jobs, the more the merit.
Well, and I would say too that for a little town like Galt, we need to be part of a bigger group if we're going to, um, have any progress. Like we talked about, uh, sending milk to China, for example. That's what Frank and I had talked about earlier. But you've got, in most cases, uh, you can't rely on luck. You have to be part of another coalition. And I guess the point I'm just trying to drive down to you is I want this to work and I want you to work hard to make it work.
Yes, ma'am. But, but you know something, and, and I wanna, I wanna just finish on one statement. I think it's equally important for a big city with half a million people like the city of Sacramento to be in this with Galt. Because it's a regional approach that, that works. If one individual jurisdiction tries to do it alone, they're gonna fail. That's not how it works. That's not how modern economic development, that's not how capital deployed that has international options looks. They look for an ROI based upon how they think a region is going to approach this and that's why we need to do it this way. Not only is it important for you guys to be involved in this, it's equally important for Mayor Powers', uh, uh, counterpart in the city of Sacramento, Mayor Johnson, to think equally as strongly about how important it is for them to be in with Galt.
Well, you've been really patient, but I just wanted a strong commitment. I, I don't want this council to, to just vote, to put their name on something unless they're willing to go the full, full distance, so to speak. Because once you put your name on something, whatever goes on out there, you know, you're part of it. So I, I guess that's the point I wanted to emphasize, uh, and that's why, Dennis, I took up so much of your time. Because I, I want us to, if we're gonna do this, I want us to be committed to be a part of it.
And, and our commitment as an organization and on behalf of the three other, uh, managing partners at this point is that we want to support you in that and we want to make it as easy as possible for you to do that and make sure that we're in true collaboration on that. Because it's not just you making the commitments, all of us as a region making the commitments to support each other.
Okay. Thank you, from my point of view anyway.
Have you been attending these meetings, Jason, just quite a few?
The, um, the Sacramento area city managers group, you know, gets together every so often and we actually appointed one representative to be attending and participatory in that meeting. That's Laura Gill that Dennis, uh, uh, mentioned. So she's been attending on our behalf- So she's been attending on our behalf, and has filled us in, and, uh, kinda brought us along. Um, my, my recommendation or expectation would be, with the council votes to endorse this tonight, is that we're getting ready to start the process of updating our own local economic development strategy, and so we would look, as part of that process, to identify areas within this regional plan that we can focus on locally. Like Dennis said, there's gonna be big chunks of this plan we're not gonna wanna focus on down here in Gulf. And we need to figure out which components make sense down here, and so that'll be, that'll be incorporated as part of our own local economic development efforts.
Okay, got it.
Anything else, Madam Mayor?
No, were, uh, were you finished?
I, I am, uh-
Oh, okay.
You're disposal.
I, I'm sorry, I think we-
You want me to drone in on?
I thought we were interrupting you, so I-
Not at all.
I wasn't sure what's end of, well, thank you very much.
Well, I, I just respectfully ask for your support.
Thank you. Okay, so, the recommended, if you want a motion, if you have a motion.
I'm going to move the recommendation.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Respectfully would love to have my name on it, aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, that's Dennis. Thank you very much. Um, okay, we're on the city attorney's office, the subject is an alternate planning commissioner. It's to you, Steve.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. At the, uh, at City Council meeting in December, Vice Mayor Singleton asked that an item be placed on the agenda to consider revising the membership of the planning commission to add an alternate planning commissioner. The membership of the planning commission currently consists of five members, with one member being appointed by each council member. Prior to June of two thousand and eleven, there was a, there was one alternate, uh, member to the planning commission, appointed by the full city council, uh, who would participate in planning commission meetings and vote when, uh, whenever one of the regular members was absent. That alternate position was eliminated by the, uh, city council when we revised the planning commission ordinance in June of two thousand and eleven. An alternate member of a commission serves in place of a regular member whenever a regular member is absent, uh, in order to reduce the possibility of a commission not having a quorum, and then not being able to conduct its business. Since June of two thousand and eleven, uh, my understanding is that there's been only one occasion when the planning commission was unable to meet due to lack of a quorum. If the city council desires to add one or more alternate members to the planning commission, there are several options regarding how an alternate member could function. The alternate, uh, member could be seated whenever any member of the planning commission was absent. Another option would be to have the alternate seated when, whenever necessary in order to just have a, a quorum. So basically, when, uh, three members would, would be absent, and the alternate would be seated to bring you back to your three out of five members for the quorum. Another item to consider, if you decide to, uh, add an alternate, is whether or not that member participates in discussions of the commission as essentially a commission member at all time, or only when that, uh, person is seated and serving as a, uh, voting member of the commission. I had Liz pass out a, a separate paper, uh, this evening, that, uh, after reflecting on the staff report today, I thought I might, uh, give you a little bit more guidance on how to, uh, approach this issue. So as a suggestion, the, the way that the council may wanna move through this item is to first decide, uh, should an alternate member be added to the planning commission? If the answer to that question is no, then, then I think we're done with the item. If the answer is yes, then a second question is, should the alternate member participate in discussions, uh, all the time, or only when sitting as a voting member? And then the last question is, should the alternate member sit as a voting member whenever a regular member is absent, or only when necessary to have a quorum? So with the response to those three, uh, questions, if the council decides to move forward and add an alternate, I would be able to take that direction from the council, prepare an ordinance, and bring that back for your, uh, adoption at a future, uh, meeting. Now, one of the items that I put at the back end of the staff report is that, instead of adding an alternate, um, one other option that the council may wanna consider is to enlarge the commission from five members to seven. So under that scenario, instead of having, uh, losing your quorum with three members absent, you'd actually lose your quorum when four members were absent. Um, I didn't put that on my little cheat sheet, but if that was something that the council was interested in considering, then that would be, uh, item four for, uh, discussion this evening. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Is there any questions or discussions, uh, Mark?
To be honest with you, I, I'd actually lean towards having two additional added on, chosen by the council. I'm going the other way. I, I thought the council made the right decision in going to five with no alternate. Uh, it, I, for as long as I've worked, when I worked here, I could never understand why there was an alternate. It was the only city, I think, that I knew of in California that had one. So I, I didn't understand the purpose. So I thought that the council had actually moved in, in a direction that made sense. Um, a- and then I think, secondly, um, if the underlying purpose is, uh, to ensure that you have a quorum, that, I, I think that you need to look at who, who's on the commission. Number one, uh, make sure that they have sufficient dedication, and, and we always have in the past, because to my knowledge, I can only recall one instance, and I think it was just not too long ago, six months ago, I think there were two conflicts of interest, and someone had an illness in the family. So that was, you know, understandable. Uh, but in, prior to that, whenever there has been scheduling issues, and I, and I don't recall how many times over the years, but, um, oftentimes, the commissioners would notify the planning commission secretary, uh, of whether they were going to be able to make a regular meeting, or maybe we'd have to consider a special meeting. And that had worked for, well, twenty-plus years. So I, that's just my take on the way I, um, interacted with the commission through that process.
Okay.
I'd like to weigh in on that. I think, uh, it's been a little over a year ago where, uh, Councilman Cruz, I believe, and Councilman Shelton met with staff to review, uh, all the commissions. And they worked very hard to come up with, uh, some improvements. And I, I'm pretty sure that there was a reason at that time that they decided to eliminate the alternate. Um, I think there needs to be some real thought going into what we're doing here. I don't think we need to be switching our positions every, uh, well, too often. I think, yes, there's room to always improve, and if a situation arises that we need to make an improvement, then we should. We shouldn't just stick to the old way, just because it was the old way. Um, I do feel like one of the reasons that we considered, uh, and by the way, the council voted unanimously at that time to eliminate the, uh, alternate. And I think one of the reasons was, the alternate was no longer acting like an alternate. Uh, the person was participating more as a member, even though they couldn't vote, uh, which was, um, not what was intended. And if I remember correctly, that was my reason for voting to eliminate the alternate. So I, I don't have necessarily a problem with adding an alternate, but I think we need to remember why we made the change, and, uh, you know, not set ourselves up for another problem. The other thing that bothers me is the inconsistency. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission, for example, they had, uh, if you wanna look at it this way, they've had twice as many, uh, meetings where they couldn't make a quorum, but yet there's no, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have an alternate, do we, on Parks and Rec Commission? So in this way, we were making them more consistent, both the planning commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, which I thought was a good thing. Now, we have other committees, uh, we have the youth committee, we have the vi- viification committee, where it, it varies, but I think those two commissions, the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission and the planning commission, should be, um, somewhat consistent in what we're gonna do. So I somewhat agree, uh, with, uh, uh, Councilwoman Cur- uh, Kurt Champion. Forgot your name there for a minute. Uh, I would, at the same time, if the council feels strongly that we need to have an alternate, I think that we should try to look at, do we need to do the same thing with Parks and Rec and be consistent?
Councilmember Singleton, do you have anything you would like to say?
I did my computer to shut off. Uh, I agree in part with, uh, Councilwoman Payne, in that Parks and Rec should have, uh, I know they've had issues also with their attendance. That's why I also, uh, am thinking that we should maybe add a couple of members, as not alternates, but members to the commission. Because if there is a case where we do fall into where we cannot form a quorum, those people aren't there, they're informed, because they are commissioners, and they have to be at these meetings, not as an alternate, where they're going, well, everybody's gonna be there at the meeting tonight, so I don't need to go. So they're not informed on a certain decision, such as the Walmart comment, for example. So I, I would, uh, again, agree with, with Payne about, well, probably I'd look at Parks and Rec on this also, uh, and get their group together and figure out how we're gonna do that, but I would look for having, um, two additional commissioners on, on planning.
Okay, um, I have a totally different hit on that. I agree with two, uh, more planning commissioners having been on the planning commission myself. The reason for that is, uh, the planning commissioner, and some people may agree or not agree, but are always voted, uh, put on a commission by a council member, and I really feel that two at large would be great, that we'd all vote on two other people. So, um, you know, I don't wanna go into details or not, but sometimes, uh, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I think that there should be two at large, and, uh, one of, by each council member. That's where I'm at on that.
I would respectfully say that I think the way it is now is pretty fair. Every, every, uh, council member has their little area, they have their person that they have, uh, um, put on the planning commission. Uh, if we go beyond that, then, you know, it's not, it's not the same. It's more of a council voting on their favorites, or the people that they think would be most qualified, as opposed to each, um, council member making their, um, appointment. And I would also say, at any time, that a planning commissioner or a Parks and Rec, uh, commissioner is not performing as they should, we have a duty to replace them with someone that we think would do a better job.
Well, I, I'm sorry. I would respectfully, respectfully, um, disagree, uh, and because of some of the verbiage that was just used, that we appoint our own council, we appoint our own. Uh, some people are under the impression that if they're appointed by a council member, they should be voting the way the council member says, uh, says it. And I'm just going back to some planning commissions that I'm on. And I think having, um, others besides the council, council appointees is a good way to go. And I don't see a problem with seven people on the planning commission. I have great thoughts that we're gonna be doing a lot of things in the future, and I think that anybody that can be involved with things that are going on, and wanna be, it's a good idea. And I, another thing about being on the, um, planning commission, although it's nice to have a bunch of new people, it's nice to have people that are, that also know exactly what a planning commission is, and exactly what some of the general plan is, and that's my opinion. So, what do we go here, shall we have somebody make a motion, or?
Um, I think, if, if the council's certainly done discussing, and there's not, uh, any speaker sheets, uh, you certainly could entertain a motion. I guess, two, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add two points. One is, currently, under your ordinance, each council member appoints an individual to the commission, but after they're appointed, they serve at the pleasure of the full city council. Um, and we wrote that into the ordinance. And the other, uh, item that was written into the ordinance last time is that, if we have a commissioner that is absent, unexcused absent for three consecutive times, that gets reported to the, uh, city council, so that you can decide whether any action is appropriate. I just wanted to make the council aware of those two items of the ordinance.
I stand corrected on that. I thought they served at the pleasure of the person that appointed them, but I do remember that was changed.
No, they can't-
Well, in theory, it was changed.
Once they're appointed, they can only be removed by a vote of the city council.
Do we have, um, any motions, one way or the other?
Well, I motioned to add the two commissioners to the-
Any second?
-planning commission.
Oh, sorry. This is the planning commission, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Not the-
I thought we had one right now.
Are there two regular members?
Two additional regular members.
Um, call for the vote, please, seconded by Councilmember Cruz.
Um, Vice Mayor Singleton?
On this motion, aye.
Councilmember Payne?
No.
And I wanna, I wanna call for my vote. I, I, I'm gonna vote no, and I, and the reason I'm voting no is, I, I don't see that there's a need to fix anything. Um, like I said, if had there been, um, I guess, one of, of, of meetings that could not be held due to a lack of a quorum, then I think maybe we need to look at it. But if it's not, if it's not broken, I don't think it needs to be fixed. No.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. I'm Mayor Powell.
Old habit, so.
I know.
Okay. Uh, most, the, motion passes. So just as a point of order, this is basically direction, uh, from the council, uh, to staff to bring back the ordinance at the next regular meeting, amending the planning commission ordinance to add the two members.
Okay. I had a little bookmark here, but I don't have it. Give me a second, just please.
Thanks for turning that air on, I can breathe a little better.
Interim regulations for temporary signs, request for direction.
Hello again. Um, if, if the city council might recall, in June of two thousand and ten, you approved an interim regulations for temporary signs. Um, because of the poor economy at the time, you wanted to allow businesses additional flexibility with temporary signs, like banners and, and A-frames and portable signs. Uh, in June of two thousand and eleven, staff brought it back, and those interim regulations were extended for another year, to expire in July twenty twelve. Um, staff unfortunately neglected to come back to council for direction at that time, and I apologize for that. Uh, we're here tonight to request direction on moving forward. Uh, as a reminder, um, this is a summary of the interim adjustments of the temporary sign regulations that the city council approved in two thousand and ten. Basically, um, the current ordinance states that temporary signs can only be used to advertise special events and promotions. They cannot constitute regular advertising. So you cannot have a temporary sign that says tacos are just open. It has to be for a, a sale or a promotion of grand opening. Um, we waived that requirement for this interim, that we don't monitor the message content while this interim program is in effect. Uh, you also waived the requirement that the banner message must change every ninety days. Uh, as long as they change the banner within a year, so it still comes through the temporary sign, we don't care what it says within that year. Uh, we raised the restriction on the number of different banners that can be displayed in a calendar year. Uh, it used to be a maximum of four, there's no longer requirement. They can only do one at a time, but they can change the banners as often as they wish. And you also waived the ten dollar permit fee, but not the actual permit application, so that we're, can keep track of them. Um, the temporary signs, just a, a real brief history. There's two general categories of temporary signs allowed in the city. Um, temporary signs allowed without a permit, and those that require a permit. Uh, temporary signs allowed without a permit are basically some window signs, a governmental flag, like the US flag, uh, menu boards with a drive-through restaurant, subject to certain restrictions. Temporary signs that require a permit are air balloons or other inflatable devices, banners, pendant poles, which is kinda like- banners, pendant poles, which is kinda like what the model home folks use, a little pendant on top of a pole, and portable signs like A-frames and sandwich boards and that sort of thing. There are general development standards that apply to all temporary signs. No temporary sign, uh, can be located in a public way. The maximum height can't exceed the height of the building to which it's pertinent, except for flags and highway commercial zone. And, um, we do not allow off-site signage, which I'll talk about a little bit more later, but generally that's considered to be a billboard in our- in our zoning code. So, all signs must be on the lot for which they're advertising, uh, products at that location. These are the specific development standards, uh, for individual signs. You can see that for banners, for example, you're allowed one per business location, the size can be one square foot per one linear foot of building frontage, um, can't exceed the height of the building, and along the- what we waived was no longer than ninety days and a maximum of four different banners per calendar year. Currently, the temporary sign permit procedure, um, we basically have a- a real brief application form, it's about four lines, they pay a ten dollar permit fee, the planning director must approve it if it meets the following requirements, conforms with development standards, it's- and this is the other one we waived, that it's temporary in nature and does not constitute regular advertising, and that it's removed, uh, at such time as the planning director deems appropriate, which is within a year. The interim procedure has been, uh, to eliminate the ten dollar fee and not require that the signs be for special events only, as well as the display periods for banners. So, staff at this point, um, just because of staffing levels, we've had a hard time, um, coming back with a revised ordinance, uh, so we're requesting that actually the city council allow us to continue the current interim program. It seems like the merchants have become fairly used to it. Uh, we haven't had too terribly many violations, uh, with the new program, and what we'd like to do is work with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, get a subcommittee together and come back with some permanent revisions to the temporary sign ordinance that hopefully are mutually beneficial to both groups. Um, in the interim, we do request your approval to continue the current program for temp signs. We're hoping by spring or so to come back with some options for revising the ordinance permanently. You'll notice on the recommendations, we are also asking for councils concurrents with the way that we're currently interpreting off-site signage. That's probably one issue that we've- we've struggled with a little bit. Uh, technically, the way the code reads, the sign must be located on the premises of the business. Um, what we run into is when you have a shopping center, such as Galt Plaza or the Riley Center, a lot of the businesses want their signs out on the landscaped frontage along the roadway, which is- could be interpreted as off-site to their business location, which might be more internal to the shopping center, however, it is on the same site as the overall shopping center. So, staff has been more lenient and just determined that as long as it's on the site of the shopping center, and they still only have one, uh, that we've been allowing those, but if city council wishes us to enforce the more stringent requirement that it has to be directly on their place of business, uh, we can certainly do that. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions?
Any comments?
I have a question. They're only allowed one sign, pole sign, is that correct? Pole sign, you know that-
Pole sign, yes.
I- I'm getting over the same course.
That's more of a-
Hard for me to-
Yeah, that's more of a permanent sign typically than a- than a temporary sign.
That's a what?
That's more of a permanent sign than a temporary sign, unless it's the pendant pole.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Well, they dig a hole in the ground, put a pole in there, and have this thing stick up for ten feet, twelve feet. Okay? There's one each, correct?
Are you talking about like the- the feather flags, we call them?
Ones with tacos on it.
Tacos or buy gold or one of those?
I don't know what they say.
Their- their lucky banner.
That y'all wanna talk about over here at Savemark?
Yes. Than one.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm asking a question. If they're allowed one sign, that- within that property of Savemark, let's say, for instance, does that mean they can put it out there on the front lawn area of that property and not within the parking area? Cause I've noticed that there's been signs where the planters are at, for example, uh, within the parking structure of that, uh, Savemark. Uh, so, what- what do we do? If they have one on the inside and- and the outside, are we- are we telling them, "Hey, you can only do one"?
Yeah, if they've got two, we're- we're telling them they can only do one. We've been lenient about, we'll- we'll allow them to display it on the landscaped area, it has to be outside the public right of way, but if it's on the landscaped area, but they could not have another temporary sign on their business location. They'd have to pick one location or the other.
Okay, but we've been kinda lenient on that, though.
Yeah, but if city council disagrees with that and wants it displayed only on the business location, we can certainly force that.
I just want it there for everybody, that's all, and I don't want it to be a distraction, you know, for instance, for drivers or whatever, I just- I just don't wanna be overabundant with flags either. That's all.
Um, anyone else?
What are you, uh, doing with these temporary signs, uh, that become, um, in a state of disrepair? I mean, are- are you going after them or asking them to remove them? I mean, if you've got these pendant flags that are completely faded out, you can't read it, or they're tattered, I mean, are we- does the city address that at all?
Uh, there is a provision in the code where we can. I can't recall of any right now, so if you have some in mind-
No, I don't, I don't.
Aren't they required to replace them after ninety days anyway?
There's not many phrases in there.
We've waived that provision with the interim regulate- regulations. A temporary sign, we're basically just using the one year max.
Right.
Anyone?
Uh, that's comfortable.
Well, I gotta agree with Mr. Campion as far as the worn and tethered flags, they kinda, it's not only making the business look bad, but it's making our town look whole look bad, if we just let those things wave and they're- you can't even read them anymore.
Yeah, if- if you're aware of ones that you feel are in disrepair, please just give me a call and we'll- we'll certainly take care of them.
Okay, um, what I have to say is, um, if you're gonna- for sure it's gonna come back in the spring, uh, I'm not happy with the way things are going, because I think people are running amok. We, you know, we gave everybody chances, and like Mike says, some people have two, they're looking in disrepair. We, you know, we are trying to support our businesses, but they also should su- support our city by making us look good, not bad, with some of these faded signs that, you know, so, um, I don't wanna sound like Scrooge here, but I'd really like it to go back to some semblance of order, and sooner than later. You know, so, um-
And Christmas is over.
Yeah, and Christmas is over, and, uh, but, uh, that's my thought on it. So-
So?
Uh, what does our-
Move, uh, council's record, uh, staff's recommendation, then.
A second. Call for votes? Vice Mayor Singleton? Who's thinking? Vice Mayor Singleton?
I heard you.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Uh, I'm only going to say this on the caveat that it comes back in spring, in spring, not summer, please, uh, so I'm gonna say yes. Aye. Okay. Okay, now we're at the, uh, Culture and Recreation Department, the rental of Shabola and Littleton Community Centers to resident nonprofit organizations.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Um, this time last year, city council approved a resolution to allow resident nonprofit organizations, on a trial basis of one year, to rent the Shabola and Littleton Community Centers for up to two times in a calendar year at no cost, with the required organizations paying one hundred and fifty dollar cleaning deposit, and limiting their advance reservations to, you know, earlier than six months in advance, um, and to abide by the special provisions such as setting up the tables and chairs for the event, limiting the use of tables and chairs to what is stored at the facility, cleaning the tables and chairs after the event, returning the tables and chairs to their area, sweeping, mopping, um, restrooms, kitchens, et cetera, um, basically ensuring that the facility is left in the same or better condition, um, than received when rented. Um, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution to continue the residential nonprofit organization rental fee waiver and the special provisions for the Shabola and Littleton Community Center rentals. In the report, it shows that we, the- what revenue had- was collected in comparison of the last two years, um, revenue is less this year as compared to the year before, um, and also there is a decrease in the number of rentals. Basically, are there any questions on whether you'd like to make this, um, adopt this resolution to keep the- the rentals free for the not- resident nonprofit organizations?
Was there something in there about?
Yeah, one of the alternatives that, uh, I wanted to point out is, you know, there had- as you can see in the staff report, there has been a significant reduction in revenue. Um, many of the, uh, private parties that would normally rent the Littleton Center like to do it on Saturday when they have their parties, and typically that's when the nonprofits have reserved, uh, their time as well, so we're from getting any revenue on those nights. So, one of the options or alternatives to consider is, is if a nonprofit wanted to rent or reserve a community center on a Saturday evening, that they restrict- they will be restricted or directed to the Shabola Center, thereby leaving the Littleton Center open for, uh, private parties to rent. They would still be able to rent Littleton and any other night of the week, or if they wanted to rent it on a Saturday night, then they would be charged, um, the- the typical rent. So, that would be a way of kinda reducing the impact, I think, on the revenue side, while not- not eliminating the- the council's intent, which is allowing nonprofits to rent our facilities at no cost.
Are there- are there conflicts, uh, at the Shabola- at the Shaboya Center, uh, I don't know, youth activities that- that whereby it's not available for nonprofits? Uh, I guess that's more a question for Monica.
Like on a Saturday night?
On a Saturday, I'm just wondering, are- are there conflicts as to the reason why you have so few using Shaboya versus Littleton, other than preference?
Availability, there are no conflicts, but there are some limitations into use of the kitchen. Um, because of the Meals on Wheels program, there is not a refrigerator available to them. Um, the ovens available and storage and things like that are available, but they would- we would have to make arrangements, or they would have to find some way to refrigerate their items. But the availability of the- the building is- is fine. It is available. Friday nights might be busy because of some of our events, but not Saturdays.
Saturday night, and I think typically it's just people aren't used to using Shabola, but it's been available, and we haven't, in the past, we hadn't allowed any groups to- to use that, the Shabola Center, and so we've opened it up, but people are still used to using Littleton, and so that's what they- they go to do, but we'd like to encourage some nonprofits that they wanna do have it on a- on a Saturday, that, uh, we direct them over to the Shabola Center.
Okay, uh, should I, before we have any discussion, does council mind if I open it up to public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. Wanna open it up to public hearing and-
Did you have a public comment? And I do- I know I have some speaker sheets out there as well.
Carl Bonar, City of Galt, and, uh, we have a problem with not having a- a hall of the size of a Littleton available on Saturday night to nonprofits for fundraisers. Now, there's a difference between a nonprofit having an event, it may not be a fundraiser, maybe something that would fit in the Shabola. We just held an event Saturday night downtown, and it fit down- fine down there, but we would like kitchen facilities, uh, perhaps at a- a future one, and we can't find- there's no other place in town that's big enough, except the Littleton. And, uh, for our fundraiser, which we had, uh, in excess of three hundred and eighty people the first time, we anticipate the happiness of the people that were there, we're going to have another one next year. Now, we're not burdening the system by coming in two, three, four times a year on Saturday night, because we have lunches on Thursday, as Kurt well knows, and thank you for being there Saturday night. But anyway, we had a great time, we anticipated another sellout next year, and we need a big facility. Now, if it comes down to it, I understand the- you need relief on the no charge thing. I would rather see that these big events for nonprofits pay a fee, a reduced fee, like it used to be in the past, but still makes that hall available on Saturday. The second thing we have a problem with is, we just finished that event, we wanna schedule for next year. We had our advertising tickets and everything on the street two and a half months in advance of the event, and except for the slowdown because of the holidays, if it had been any other time of the year, we would have been sold out probably thirty days in advance, but we fought the holidays, we still sold out. And, uh, so anyway, we have a- those problems, uh, first, getting it on the calendar in advance, and secondly, not having the proper hall to have it in. If it- if it is, comes down to a fee, so be it. We'll pay it. You gotta maintain the building. Another thing, uh, another thing we- I have a problem with, uh, we always tend to keep a- an event to six hours. That's the safety margin for the- for the activity, keeping everybody in control on that. And, uh, with this event, we can't start at, uh, five o'clock or thereabout. We need six hours, we don't start till six. We shut the bar off at eleven o'clock, and I think that was prudent, and we let them dance out the jet fuel till almost midnight, but then it takes us about, uh, and meanwhile, the kitchen's cleaning up and all the other cleanups going on, but we're probably about twelve thirty getting out of there. Now, we might be able to work it down to, say, twelve even, but even eleven o'clock at Littleton is a problem. The older people that we have, the alumni, we have no problem with that.
Thank you, Carl. Um, Dan Batondo?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Dan Batondo, I'm the president of the Galt Lions Club. Um, one thing that I can, oh, and I- I do apologize for my, uh, slovenly attire, I did get off work on my- yeah, I'm like, uh, Lions Club members of the past, I am not retired, so. Um, I, uh, the one thing I do kind of have that I see an issue with closing it off to nonprofits on a Saturday would be, like, in our case, we only have pretty much the crab feed there. It goes to eleven, we shut it off, we're done, we're out. But when it comes to nonprofit organizations, when you start charging them for five hundred bucks, yeah, that adds into the revenue of the city, I- I, you know, I agree with that, you guys do see a loss in revenue with that. But also, every sign that we make goes back into the community, whether it's through Boy Scouts, helping people get, you know, vision treatments, eyeglasses, things like that. You've been to our meetings, Mayor Powers, you- you know what we're about. Mark, you were a member of our club for a very long time. Um, so, I think everybody pretty much knows that every dollar that's seen by ours and any other nonprofits in town that uses that facility goes right back into the community. So, yeah, there is a loss of revenue, but ultimately, you're helping the people of the community by leaving it open to that. The more money we make, the more money that goes back into that community. Um, also, another thing you'd also, I- I would foresee that you would lose by having it at eleven, um, I think you would lose a lot of people who would pay, like us, to out-of-town venues, Harold Barn, uh, Thornton Hall, they don't require security. It'd be about the same amount for a fee, we wouldn't have to pay security, we could stay up until one o'clock. Um, in terms of security for our insurance, we just have to have an armed police officer there. Pretty sure I can slide my brother a crab feed ticket, he'd be there with his badge on him, no problem. So, I foresee that you would lose a lot of revenue, you're not gonna get back as much as you think by charging all these nonprofits. So, um, that's pretty much where I'll leave it, uh, I still got a little bit left, but I won't bother you with my-
Don't- don't leave yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, let me ask Monica, is this currently that they could have it two times in one year?
Yes.
Like, the Lions Club could actually have it for- at no cost twice a year? What if you could have it one time for no cost? Would that hurt you that much?
Um, no, because, I mean, we do do two main events every year. We have the, uh, we have our crab eating January, and then we, uh, we actually just started a luau in June, we used our second one for that last year, and that was all we used it for. So, um, I mean, we could, in theory, do the luau. Well, we were actually gonna move to an outdoor event anyway, so that we could have the fire, ponies and dancers and stuff anyway, so I mean, that's really a non-issue. So, in our situation, once would be good, but in terms of other nonprofits, and I'm not just speaking on my behalf, I'm also speaking on behalf of the other nonprofits in town, I don't know what their schedules are, I know there are quite a few that- I don't know what their schedules are. I know there are quite a few that use it more than once. For us, it would work. I don't know about for all of them. And you, I don't think you'd get back as much revenue as you think by charging them. I think they'd go elsewhere. I actually know they'd go elsewhere.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask you one question before you leave? Because I just was thinking of that. Could you go elsewhere for a four hundred dollar rental fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, actually, a hundred and fifty dollars less than that.
Where's that at?
Harold Barn.
Okay.
But now, they just, they just increased their rates up there.
A little bit. Actually, it was two hundred and fifty dollars a couple of months ago, but it's not four hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't know whether that number, they just increased it.
Yeah.
Just a couple, a couple weeks ago.
And out there in the Boondocks, we're kind of all about who you know.
A week ago, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Tracy Lockey.
No, wait. I'm kidding.
I'm here, my name's Tracy Lockey, and I'm here basically on behalf of the youth nonprofit organizations talking there. I'm here on the scouting, the Boy Scouts, the youth baseball. And we use the hall usually twice a year. Just Cub Scouts, PAC eighty-four uses the hall usually twice a year for our Pinewood Derby and our Blue and Gold banquet, which most of you attend. We've invited all city council members. And that is our award and our ceremonies. We don't do anything for profit. We don't sell anything. We're using the hall to thank our youth of the city. And to ask us to go somewhere else, we can't. If you've gone to our Blue and Gold, we have four or five hundred people. There is not another place in Galt that we can hold four or five hundred people. And to ask our youth, who are giving back to our community, that is what we're telling the kids in Cub Scouts, the boys, get back to your community. To ask them to go somewhere else outside of their community that they're supporting, I think is not fair to the youth. Also, we have our Eagle ceremonies in the halls. Those boys are doing an Eagle project for the city, for the school, for baseball, and then to ask them to go somewhere else, I don't think is fair either. I, we've never paid before, the youth nonprofit have never paid before, and this year, we were told to pay a hundred and fifty dollars. Our group only charges for the kids' awards. If we do hold a fundraiser, like you'll see them, the kids selling popcorn, that goes back into the individual boys' accounts for them to use towards scouting events. We don't make any money. We're not supposed to make any money. They're for the youth. And so, you're getting it from two different points of views, but we're a totally different area, and I just want it to be known, we, we'll pay a hundred and fifty dollars, hoping that we'll get that deposit back. Every time we've used the hall, someone comes, unlocks the door for us, unlocks the tables and doors and says, "Bye-bye." We take care of it. We clean it. We clean the bathrooms. We take all the garbage out ourselves. Someone comes back, says, "Wow, the room's greatly, it's cra, it's clean, cleaner than it was." "Thanks," and locks the door. That's all, that, that's happening for us. Unlock the door, lock it up. That's all we're asking for. But to charge us, and we're, we'll pay the hundred and fifty dollars deposit for know we're going to get it back, but we don't have the extra hundred and fifty dollars in the shop.
Do you, uh, do you always have it on Saturday night, or do you just have it?
No. We don't. We're youth. We don't do it on the evenings. We either do it on Sunday afternoon, usually two to six, or a Pinewood Derby we do during Sunday afternoon. We have used, asked to use the other hall. Usually, there's basketball games going on Saturday afternoons that we can't use the other hall.
That would be the Littleton you're talking about?
No, we usually use the Littleton. Chabolas, there's usually basketball, youth basketball going on, when we've asked to use it. So, that's another, that's another youth organization that's going on, and we're not going to butt into them, but, and we have a big group of people.
And you referred to earlier, you didn't, you never paid a hundred and fifty dollars. If this, was this new this year then?
This is brand new to us.
So, how did it work before?
We've never paid. We, they were nonprofit for the youth. We've always just signed the agreement. They've let us use it. This hundred and fifty for our Blue and Gold, which we have scheduled in February, which is the birthday for scouting, they've told us that we need to pay a hundred and fifty, which we said, "No problem," but they told us they'll pencil us in until a decision's made by city council.
Did you get that hundred and fifty back?
We haven't had it yet.
No, I mean, okay, that's what...
We haven't had it yet, so we haven't got the hundred, we haven't done the hundred and fifty yet.
But you expect to get it all?
We, we, yes, absolutely.
Is the six months, is that a problem, that you cannot reserve it early, um, yeah?
We always reserved it, so we'd go in the next day and reserve it, because Blue and Gold's birthday of scouting is in February, so we always do the last Sunday of the month.
Is there, is there a reason that the, it was six months, it was the soonest you could reserve a date? Or what is the reason for that? I don't...
Well, I think it's in consideration of giving somebody something for, for free. We didn't want to, to give them, you know, have them book it up that far in advance, and we still give opportunities, so.
Okay.
If it's important for somebody to reserve it that far in advance, and they can pay the fee, and they can reserve it, same thing that was mentioned earlier. If somebody wants to use Littleton on Saturday night, they can still use Littleton on Saturday night. There would just be a fee of doing that. We're just trying to, you know, strike a balance, I think.
Well, I can see with the Boy Scouts, that is a significant difference. They're not holding fundraisers. They're not there to generate revenue. You know, they're not having a function.
You can talk about Sunday, not Saturday, so that's not...
It wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect them. It's only going to be Saturday night that we're talking about.
Okay, and what about the two per group? Because in Galt, we have multiple Cub Scouts and Boy Scout groups. So, is that going to be two, two Cub Scout, Boy Scout in general? And all the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts would have to go into a lottery? Or are you going to say Cub Scout PAC eighty-four can have it for two, Troop two thirty-eight can have it for two, PAC one nineteen, or Troop one nineteen can have it for two? How is that going to work? Because that's also going to affect all the Cub Scouts and Boy Scout troops here in town.
Well, it's been in effect for the last year. So, how, I guess the question is, do you know how it's been implemented up to this point? Have you had concerns or issues with it?
We actually had to, for Pinewood Derby, we were, we had to go look somewhere else. So, we had to find a new location for Pinewood Derby in January, correct?
Did you, did you, in our city, you're talking about, you had to look outside our city?
We found a place inside the city, because we lowered, we usually have around a hundred, a hundred and twenty cars. This year, we only had sixty cars, so we could find a smaller location. So, a church said, they opened their doors and said, "By all means, come to us. We're not going to charge you." Otherwise, we would, that would be three hundred dollars a year to use it twice a year. That's usually the only times, two times we use it. But our question is, if they're going to let us use it for Blue and Gold, then what's going to happen with all the Eagle ceremonies and anything else that they want to use it for?
My, I guess my question is, you were turned away from the city and had to find another location because you exceeded your two?
No. We use it usually two times a year, January and February of the year. When we found out about this, that we, we couldn't use it in January, we went and looked somewhere else, because at that time, they didn't know what was going on. And because they were waiting for city council, and both meetings were canceled in January. So, they couldn't give us, so we're now penciled in for February for Blue and Gold. And that's what we're waiting for, to find out after tonight's, if there are decisions made, then we'll get to decide if we get to do our Blue and Gold. If it's a four hundred dollar fee, or whatever the fee is, we can't afford that. We're going to have to go outside the city.
So, you're, you're basically, you're asking the council to continue the current...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't understand before, before, before this change occurred a year ago. That's what doesn't make sense to me.
All nonprofits were, there was a fee for nonprofits for use of any of our facilities. It was, I think, four hundred dollars that was, that was charged. I think sometimes the way that it was applied was done inconsistently with various groups, and so that's one of the problems we tried to correct this year, is making sure that everybody's treated the same way, regardless of which group you were with, or, or anything else.
Well, I, you know, in, in the case of the Scouts, they do see a distinction. I was thinking about a difference, but they're not there generating revenue.
Right.
You know, and to that extent, I don't, I, I don't think the hundred and fifty dollar deposit is unreasonable at all, if they don't claim.
Right, and that's the only purpose for the deposit.
That was the purpose of it.
They clean it, they get it back.
Yeah, so I, I don't see a problem with that, but I don't know if maybe we need to look more closely at, you know, what types of, of nonprofit organizations are looking, working for? Those that are for, that are generating a profit or, or revenue. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, you know, it's not exactly a community, but if you have an organization that's not generating, they're just holding a function. Um, I think there is a difference.
I thought, uh...
I don't think it's clear cut as what the, what the alternatives are in the staff report. I guess that's my concern.
Okay, if you have something else you want to say? I thought I heard them say that, for the ones that are having fundraising events, that they could probably live with just once, once a year, which, and then, which would be different than from the ones that are just events. Mark, for you guys?
We don't have, we don't have a listing of...
I'll get there.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Kurt.
I'm trying to get there too, but go ahead.
Go ahead. The, a listing of the, of the nonprofits, I mean, how many of these are actually twice of the, of the eighteen? How many of those are, we don't know. We don't have that.
Put that information together.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I say something now? This is what I want to say, because I've listened to everything. I've listened to everything that everyone says. This was my, I brought this up, and I think I created a monster with this by not thinking it through. But hearing what Carl had to say and some other groups had to say, I wanted it for fundraising, for people that were doing fundraising for this, for things that were going on in the city. There's a difference between an event and a fundraiser, like Kurt said. An event is to generate money for an organization. I understand that, and we need, they have to do that too. But when you're having big, huge events like that, as Carl said, the four hundred dollars isn't a problem. With the Scouts, having their, their Blue and Gold dinner, that's a problem. They're not generating any money. They're just trying, they're having something for the kids in the community. Fundraisers that I was looking at were kind of like the kind that, when people have a spaghetti dinner real quick, because somebody needs help with, somebody was in a car accident, somebody in the, there was a citizen or an organization that needed some help real quick. And I think, and by saying, "We could do two," then everybody started jumping on the bandwagon that we're going to start having some events. Okay, let's, you know, let's do this and let's do that. And the purpose for what I was bringing it up for was when we were having fundraising for things that were going directly right back to the community, like, people were going to do something, and the next day, they were giving some money to, you know, somebody that was, like I said, in a car wreck or needed medical expenses or something, because those are the kinds of little quick, fast things that people do to generate some money to help somebody out in the community in need. So, and, you know, then there are different ways, as even Barbara said, of, of different things. There are events, and there are fundraisers, and there are certainly big groups that can afford the four hundred dollars, and others that are just trying to help somebody out. So, um, that's where I'm at. Mark?
Mark?
I get to say something?
You do.
Woo! Um, actually, you took most of my thunder, but I do, I do believe the events that you're talking about, whether it be Scouts or any other organization that's youth oriented, they're not generating any profit. I, I still have an issue with the hundred and fifty, but I know we have to charge something for the cleaning fees. As far as profit, I hate that word, whenever it ties into a, a nonprofit organization. They're building funds to go back into the city. Fundraiser, thank you. I mean, personally, I don't see an issue with it, and I, I think we, my personal thing is, we leave it alone. Like Kurt said previously, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
But we, we are having a problem with the Saturday nights. You know, because everybody wants to have it on a Saturday night.
I understand that.
Making no money by letting everyone have it on Saturday night, so. You know, and a lot of these smaller things could be at Chabola, correct?
Yeah.
Well, not according to what she just said, because...
There's probably a half dozen events in the city that happen during the year that couldn't be accommodated in Chabola. The vast majority of them are small enough. There's, I could, you know, I can name the big ones. It's the crab feed, the lobster feed, the Blue and Gold. There's probably four or five a year that need to be in Littleton. The rest of them, you know, can be in, in Chabola. But right now, we don't really have any mechanism to say, "You have to be, you're, you're too, you're too small for Littleton, so we're going to put you over in, in Chabola."
Let me ask a question, because one of the things Ms. Lockey brought up was, they couldn't use the Chaboya because there was a basketball game going on at the time. Don't we have agreements with the, with the schools, so that we can use those for those types of events?
Yeah, I mean, we're using every available gym space in the city, pretty much. I don't know if we do a lot of games on Saturdays in the Chabola Center, what time those end for the group at night.
Right now, Saturday games can go until about eight o'clock. That's our fourth grade and younger group. So, that's, everything else is out at the schools, but that is our largest.
So, but I thought we just said that there weren't really any scheduling conflicts on Saturday night.
Well, but that's, we're looking at Valley Oaks right now, so that one had just become available. So, right now, we're going, we had gone till eight o'clock, but in future years,
We're moving some of them.
It could be an issue because we now have Valley Oaks.
But she also mentioned accommodations as far as the kitchen's concerned. Didn't she say some refrigerator units?
We would have to figure out what to do about a refrigerator. You still have the stove. You still have access to everything else, but currently...
And that's in what center?
At Chabola.
Chabola.
The only refrigerator is the one that's used for Meals on Wheels, and it is locked, because my, my employee, as well as the city, is responsible for everything that's in that refrigerator.
Well, not only are you worried about an additional refrigerator, you're worried about space, because there's nowhere to put it.
Well, there's mainly in that room, but we are looking at where we else would get to put it. I mean, we have two other rooms. Right now, we have a freezer room that has, you know, it has two freezers in it, so that we can find somewhere else.
So, we could fit something in there to accommodate that building, to make it usable.
One of the, from listening to the various discussions, seems like there's, there's some differing opinions, but it seems like you're all pretty close in some ways. One of the, maybe I'll just offer a suggestion, would be to, to take a look at, you know, leaving things the way they are for the most part, as far as, you know, two, two free during, for each nonprofit during the year, a hundred and fifty dollar deposit, but limiting it to, you know, one free event on a Saturday evening. Or something, I've heard that from several different council members. So, you cut, you cut down the number of these events on, on Saturday nights, but you maybe not eliminate entirely. You give everybody one shot to have their one big event on a Saturday night. If they want to have more than that, then they've got to do it on a Friday night, or move over to Chabola, or, or something like that. I think maybe that's an alternative that, you know, wasn't listed here, but certainly something you might want to consider.
How big of a refrigerator do you need?
I guess that would be up to you guys to determine. I mean, refrigerator...
Well, you know what goes on in the kitchen, so you would have the better idea than I would, or say Jason would, so how big refrigerator do you need?
We have an industrial refrigerator at Chabola, but it's being used, so it would probably be a matter of purchasing another.
Approximately what goes to run, run, do you know?
Maybe we could have a fundraiser for a refrigerator.
I don't know how much one would...
Well, I'm just looking at other alternatives, just as, as Mr. Berman is doing, is if we, you know, we're trying to find alternatives to this, if we have to, let's figure out a way we can raise money if we have to, like she just said, get another refrigerator. Now, the problem is transporting back and forth, I understand.
I don't know how big of an issue refrigeration is for, for the group. I mean, we've had a lot of city functions there. We've never had an issue with not having refrigeration typically. The caterer comes in, they're taking care of all those issues. You're not having to store things for a very long period of time, or you bring in ice, I mean...
It was not an issue for the one nonprofit that did use it.
Yeah, so I don't know that if it becomes an issue, we can certainly look at that, but I don't know if that's a big obstacle. I think, well...
I'm just saying that this, for me, is, it's, it's glance and openly needs more detail than that. Like, Mr. Camping was saying, is that, you know, we have Boy Scouts and Girl Scout functions as opposed to a, a, a nonprofit organization that is trying to raise money to keep their organization going. So, I think there's a distinction there that we don't have.
Well, all, all this report attempted to do is follow council direction. Council adopted this last year. The council asked us to bring it back one year later, to see how it was working. So, if the council wants to give us alternative direction, take a look at a different model, to do something entirely different, then we can certainly take that direction and come back with something new. But this is, this is the direction we got from council last year.
I'd like to make the motion, just to move things along.
I think we might have one more speaker?
Oh, okay.
No? No? Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I would recommend that we modify it to allow one free rental at either facility, and then change the, one time only, change the reservations, because you wouldn't need the six months, because if they're only going to get to use it once, they'd be paying the second time anyway. So, they would, that way, people could make those reservations a year in advance, for their, for their one item. So, so for, so for the one thing, maintain the hundred and fifty dollar deposit. And then I would, I would ask that staff maybe try and categorize, write a report back, categorizing the types, the various types of nonprofits. And I don't know if there's something else out there that, that, other than what we've talked about. I mean, you have scouting, there may be, you know, some other groups.
There's a lot of youth programs. There's Galt Youth Baseball, Youth Soccer, Booster Club. There's a lot of youth, you know, things, a lot of them do do fundraising. I don't know.
Okay, see, and there's a difference. I want to know which ones are fundraisers and which ones are simply events, to where it's, it's awards or such. And then also, the, the types of, of usage that the mayor was speaking about, where it's for an individual, where there happens to be some catastrophic issue, or someone was in need. And I think those are different categories, and I think what, I think I would like to look at and see maybe a different structure, destructure, for the, based on the type of, of... for the, based on the type of, of, uh, usage. So. In addition to that, if I could add to it, checking into the, the possibility of getting a refrigerator at Chabola Center because just, just at a glance, looking on, on the net, anywhere from between two and four thousand dollars for an industrial refrigerator. That's just a guesstimate based on what I saw. So.
She said that only one person uses it. So the way of a four hundred dollar fee to buy a four thousand dollar.
Well, no, actually you're opening up the, that particular building so that you have the same thing you have with the Littleton. Now you can have the kitchen used.
I think we're kind of getting off topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a little.
I think we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, that was a motion.
Would you repeat?
No, can I just, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Um, is there anyone, if anyone that want to make the motion?
So the motion, just, I believe the motion on the floor.
Could you repeat, could you save the motion please, Kurt?
I believe the motion on the floor is to adopt the, uh, resolution in your staff package with the following amendments. To change two times a year to one time a year, to strike item two, limit the advanced reservations to no earlier than six months in advance. Those were the only two changes to the resolution. And then the second part of the motion was to provide direction to staff to report back on the types of nonprofit organizations that were using the facilities and to check into the cost of refrigeration.
Let me just make a point of clarification. When you said one time a year, are you talking about one time on a Saturday night? Or they want to have a second event on like a Thursday, would it still be just be limited to one? Or we're talking about just one, one free no matter when you have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, one free.
That's, that's, that's the motion.
Can I, can I make a motion? I seconded that. Um, can I just put in a caveat right now? I mean, only because the scouts are going to have something before it might come back out.
I'm going to address that after the motion.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay.
Call for the vote.
One question, um, just maybe for the, for the attorney. So the various types of nonprofits as well as the usage.
The types of use, the usage types.
Just to make sure I had it correct.
It's like event or fundraiser or.
You're looking for us to kind of categorize the types of uses, whether it's a, a function fundraiser or whatnot.
I'm checking my.
Is that good with everybody? Okay, call for the vote please, Vice Mayor Singleton.
Once you get it, right? Once. Hi.
Councilmember Payne.
Hi.
Councilmember Camping.
Hi.
Councilmember Cruz.
Hi.
Mayor Powers.
Hi.
And then could we ask staff to, to, I guess, clarify with the scouts on their February blue and gold, blue and gold?
Yeah, so they'd be allowed to have that for, for the same, for free with just a hundred and fifty dollar deposit.
Well, how many scouts and troops, how many you got? Please don't tell me two hundred. Well, how many, so how many does that make altogether? Is that five? Or I don't know how it works.
They have two packs and, and, uh, two troops, but they have their own building. That's an issue.
Okay, so there's. I think they're all different units, in my opinion, but that's only my opinion.
Do all five use the Littleton each, each individual?
It would be helpful to have clarifications.
Yeah.
To know how to proceed.
I think, I think, you know, maybe one of the things that we need to consider is, um, if it's a, if it's a citywide scout function like Blue and Gold, then it's considered one thing. But if an individual, each individual group, then, you know.
It's not citywide.
Oh, so each pack has its own blue and gold? So you'd have five or six of those?
Right, because if they decided they did want to do it separately from yours, then I don't want Parks and Rec to say, hey, sorry, you already used it up.
I agree.
Um, okay. Can we just get some clarification? Do we need to do clarification on that now or? Okay. No, um.
We can, we can, maybe what we can do is bring that back because we're going to bring back different groups, their functions, what they do. We can get clarification. I think it won't affect their event coming up.
I don't think anybody would do anything bad to the boy scouts, so, seriously.
Or girls scouts for that matter, not be discriminating here.
We've got, we've got a meeting coming up at the end of the month, so, um, we'll bring that back and then we can get some clarification from the council on that.
Okay, let's move right along. And thanks, everybody, for your input because that was important, I think. Um, okay, human resources. Approval of proposal, proposed solid range and job description for Deputy Finance Director Hall.
The recommendation tonight is, um, similar to the one that was on the consent calendar, um, except that this has not been previously approved by council through the budget process. So really what the recommendation is, is to take the vacated, um, or the vacant accounting manager position and reclassify that into a deputy public, oh, I was going to say deputy public director, um, deputy finance director. And along with that would be a new job description and the salary range. And as I described earlier with the, um, senior plant maintenance mechanic, there's a, a pretty basic salary survey and then also internal comparison is how we arrived, um, at the salary. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a comment. I think that a deputy finance director is, is really needed, uh, only because of the things we're going through now. It's redevelopment, successor agencies and all that. There's a couple more layers of finance things that we have to do. And although Inez does an excellent job, I think a little help once in a while would be great. Okay, so do I have a motion to, uh, any comments? Do I have a motion? Okay. Moved in second. Call for the vote please.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Payne?
Hi.
Councilmember Camping, Councilmember Cruz?
Hi.
Mayor Powers?
Hi.
Okay, moving right along to the Public Works Department, the annual utilities and solid waste CPI rate adjustments. Steve Winkler, there you are. You're on.
Madam Mayor and council members, um, we'll try to be brief. You've had a long meeting and got a few more items to get through here. Um, back on February seventh, uh, twenty twelve, your council, um, authorized rate increases, uh, effective March first of this past year for, uh, water, storm water and solid waste services. And somehow we jumped a couple of slides here, all right? Uh, and it actually proposed a one-time reduction in the sewer rates based on, um, some, uh, good bid prices that were received in, uh, for prior wastewater treatment plant, uh, capital expenditures. Um, these actions were taken following public notifications and informational outreach meetings and a formal public hearing, uh, uh, under the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, which we commonly know as Proposition two eighteen. And those were majority protest hearings that you held. Um, you also authorized, um, on that date, uh, annual utility increases tied to a consumer price index. Uh, basically urban consumers in the western United States, uh, as an index within the CPI. And, uh, that was authorized for five years through, uh, calendar year twenty seventeen. Um, the annual CPI adjustments, uh, were tied to the prior twelve month period ending each October and were subject to a minimum of thirty days' advance public notice and a finding that the proposed revenues would not exceed projected operational costs, which also would include planned capital projects and reserve requirements. Uh, at that time, the council also retained discretion to reduce or eliminate proposed annual adjustments. We're bringing this item back today because we're coming up, excuse me, on March first, on our first annual index period. And, uh, to address the two requirements, one that a finding be made and also that, uh, council would have an opportunity for discretionary input, uh, we were wishing to propose some procedures for the following five-year increments. And so what we're recommending tonight is that, um, that you, uh, establish, uh, approve staff recommendations to establish some procedures. These will, uh, accomplish a couple of things. One is create expectations for staff as well as minimize costs associated with the required public notices. Uh, we are proposing that the Public Works Director, uh, be authorized to implement the indexed annual rate increases for water, sewer, storm drainage in the tier-two rate areas, which are basically, uh, new developments, uh, uh, and subdivisions that were approved after two thousand and three within the city. And also for contractual, um, uh, indexes on the solid waste contract for both residential and commercial. And the amounts for the, uh, current year, uh, if you approve our actions and our request, uh, would be showing as two and a half percent for water, sewer and, uh, tier-two stormwater areas. And, um, three point seven four percent for residential and one point eight one percent monthly increases for, um, solid waste refuse collection rates. Um, the reason for these recommendations is, uh, to allow us, again, to provide the required thirty days' notice. And we're proposing that we give an annual memo to the city council, similar to what we did this past December, um, advising of what the indexed rates were and, uh, how that would affect rates. Uh, if the annual adjustments were approved, that would give council an opportunity to request a formal hearing if they wish to consider something other than the indexed rate. And it would also then give staff an opportunity to, um, achieve an economically feasible notice requirement, notably that we would include a notice on the face of the December billing, since we have a bi-monthly billing process in the city. Um, uh, we either need to do something in December or, um, we have to do a special mailing to all of all customers based on the resolution previously adopted. Uh, that separate, uh, mailer to every home and business in the city would, uh, cost approximately forty-five hundred dollars a year and would take a bite out of the actual proposed inflationary increase. Um, by putting it in the December billing, uh, we avoid a problem with, well, why would you wait to put it in the February billing? Unfortunately, February is the only month of the year that doesn't have thirty days, so we're not able to accomplish thirty days' advance notice if we wait till the February billing. Um, basically, uh, we would then provide that notice to customers and, um, we would, with your approval, would implement that, uh, effective March first, which would then show up on their April billing, since we bill in arrears for the first month. So with that, um, again, if you approve our recommendations, this would take place for the first annual increase, uh, upcoming in March first. You've already provided notice to council and to, uh, the public on their bills as to the potential increase. And, um, uh, the reasons for doing this, uh, are that, um, and I believe the intent of the council a year ago was, in reading the staff report and the approved actions, was to prevent the loss over time of purchasing power of our rates due to inflationary pressure. And as costs rise for fuel and for labor and for chemicals and for regulatory requirements, it gives us an opportunity to essentially keep pace and not see an erosion, uh, of our reserves and our planned exp, uh, uh, future ability to do capital projects. Uh, also, uh, in protecting our reserve funds, we do have a number of capital projects that are planned and any monies that are not in reserves, when those projects come due, uh, we would then have to look at a, a greater future cost increase rather than a gradual. We believe that a gradual increase in rates is probably the most equitable for our ratepayers, uh, spreads that out over time and, uh, actually allows us to adopt lower rates in the long run as we're able to gradually build some reserves for those future projects. Um, with respect to the two findings that, that need to be made, uh, we would, uh, provide in that memo to council annually, um, a finding as to that the revenues, uh, that are proposed with any given inflationary adjustment would not exceed, uh, our operating costs, uh, including near-term capital costs. And in your, in your packet and in the following slide, uh, we're going to show you what the five-year capital, uh, maintenance and regulatory project outlook is. Uh, in summary, we have seven water system projects totaling six million dollars and we'll put those up in a moment. Um, uh, so we have a six million dollar bill to be paid over the next few years, uh, looking at the five-year window. And we currently only have one point six million dollars set aside toward those costs. So we either can gradually, um, uh, grow, grow our rates over time or we can do larger increases at the time of need. Similarly, eleven sewer system projects that are currently projected to total eighteen point nine million, uh, against reserves of only nine and a half million. And we have one storm drainage project in the five-year outlook for approximately forty-five thousand dollars. And we currently have a grand total of a hundred dollars, uh, in available fund balance reserves. Uh, before we give you a picture of what those projects are, um, just quickly to give you some comparison, some idea what we're talking about, uh, against all of the indexed, uh, rate increases for the four services, we're talking about a total of two dollars and sixty-one cents per month, uh, for a typical si- single-family resident. Uh, obviously, commercial rates and metered rates, uh, would vary proportionally. But for a typical flat rate, single-family home in the tier-two rate area, uh, they would see, uh, and you can see the breakdown, sixty-eight cents for water, eighty-five cents for sewer, seventeen cents for storm in the tier-two areas, and ninety-one cents a month, uh, for refuse, which is a pass-through under our contract with California Waste Recovery Systems. So, um, that would bring our total rates, uh, monthly to a hundred and five dollars and sixty-nine cents for a typical single-family resident. And just looking at our two neighboring communities, uh, which are actually larger than we are, I think you'll find that those totals are favorable. Uh, and in some cases, we're, we're last, and other cases, we're in the ballpark of what we're also seeing, uh, for our neighboring communities for water and soup. Uh, here is a list of those projects that we mentioned earlier. And, uh, uh, anyone who's, uh, watching and holding us accountable, I would note that these are all for current system maintenance. They are not, uh, for growth or capacity enhancement. Uh, those are paid for out of a different fund, uh, which is developer impact fees. And, uh, we'll be bringing back, uh, uh, over the course of the next, uh, year or so, some, some recommendations relative to the, uh, proposed developer impact fees to pay for growth projects. These are strictly the projects to keep the current system capacities and maintain existing pipes, pumps, uh, and, uh, wastewater treatment plant capacity for, and as well as water system. So, uh, we're not looking to, to do anything with growth on the backs of our current ratepayers, but we do need to maintain the current system that they're benefiting from. With that, um, we're recommending that you accept, uh, both our written staff report and this oral report to constitute, uh, an annual staff report for this coming March first and, uh, uh, give us authorization to proceed, uh, with the annual rate adjustments and approve, uh, the procedures that we've mentioned, uh, which is providing thirty days, or at least thirty days' advance notice to council members and customers of the proposed annual adjustments, uh, along with, uh, an indication of what the rates would look like. And that we would, in that memo, the council certify, uh, that we meet the test of not, uh, having excess revenues over needed costs or reserves. And, uh, if you approve that, we will proceed with implementation. And again, noting that, uh, if council members wish to have that agendized for, uh, uh, consideration of other than the indexed rate, uh, that we would then agendize that, but that would entail, um, that potentially separate noticing requirements after council action. So we would open it up to any questions the council may have.
Okay, we have public, I'm going to open it up to public steering first.
We have one, Mr. Walters.
Mr. Walters, good evening, council and staff. On the 4490, there was no discussion about the sewer upgrade fee, which the council last year, I believe, separated it out. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
So, and one of the other things that goes along with that was the not taxing that fee, and you are, in fact, taxing that fee this time. Am I correct on that?
Madam Mayor, the answer is no, that is incorrect. If you will look at Exhibit 4A in your packet, I apologize, I do not have a slide to put up for the public, but the proposed rates for wastewater, I believe you're talking about, still include an upgrade debt service column in our rate breakout, and if you'll notice, that the rates for the 2012 upgrade debt service are identical to the proposed rates for a 2013 upgrade. We're only applying the index to the base charges and commodity rates, which would be the areas where we'd see the cost increases, and that, Mr. Walters, I think is alluding that our debt service doesn't change. We have a 20-year fixed payment schedule, and inflationary pressures would not be a factor there. So we are not proposing to inflate the debt service, only the operating cost columns.
Okay, so how did you get to the figure of 4490 if you didn't add the debt service to that? Because on the sewer bill, it's 67.74, so half of that is 33-something. How did you get to 4490 if you didn't add the $11 a month for debt service?
My understanding for a single-family residence is that our current sewer rate is, there with me, 33.87 per month, okay? Which on a typical bill, since it's bi-monthly, you'd multiply by two. So that would be 67, 50 and change.
But you're stating 4490.
Monthly, okay? So to get to your bi-monthly bill, you'd multiply that by two.
The only way you can get there is by using the debt service. That's my personal point.
Well, if you take 33.87 and add 2.5%,
It comes out to 85 cents.
Right, and 33.87, and...
Not a dollar 12. It's 85. The reason why I'm saying this, and you can double-check that if you want, you might say that that 27 cents that you're charging for the debt service is meaningless. It's only like $3 a year per household. But if you do that for the life of the contract, and say 8,400 people, that comes out to a half a million dollars more a year, more within that 18-year period. And if you do that each year, if you do that each year, and you're looking at $2 or maybe $3 million for the course of that 18-year period. So my concern was, and always has been, that you cannot use the debt service for anything else, and the law states that you can't use it for that. So I'm curious as to where you got that 4490. The only way you could get to that 4490 is add the $11 in there, $11.03.
Madam Mayor, if I may, your total sewer bill is going to be the 33.87 in base charges, which again is on Exhibit 4A, plus the 11.03 debt service gets you to 4490. We are proposing that the debt service remain $11.03 a month.
But you're charging a dollar and 12 cents, the only way you can get...
Well, if you look, the sewer fee is going from 4490 to 45.75, which is an 85-cent increase.
So you're not, so you're telling me you're not using the $11 to raise more income? Or any fee?
It stays the same, year to year.
I have the staff report, and it says that you're going to charge a dollar and 12 cents. It says 68 cents a month for water, a dollar 12 cents for sewer, 17 cents for storm drain. Is that a typo? Am I looking at this thing wrong, or what?
Well, I'm on page three of the staff report.
Three dash three, right.
We're proposing a dollar 70 per month, which is 68 cents for water, 85 cents for sewer.
Here it says a dollar 12. That's probably where the, here in the staff report, it says a dollar 12. I just want, I just wanted to make sure that we're not charging the debt service. That's all I'm concerned about.
And I'm not sure where you got that.
It's staff report.
Well, it's an outdated staff report. The staff report, probably you got that probably prior to the originally scheduled hearings a couple of weeks ago. We found, we found a problem.
You found a problem with this?
And we corrected it. So we're currently recommending, and I apologize, didn't know you had an old staff report.
Okay, that's where the problem was, okay.
It's been corrected because we did look at that more closely. We did have a question about that, and it has been rectified to make sure that we're not charging an inflationary index on the debt service.
Correct, okay. That's very good, thank you.
I apologize.
Okay, there's no one else, so I'll close the public hearing. And council members, anything we'd like to add?
Glad we had agreement.
Hey, you got, do I have a motion to, hold on.
Okay, the recommendation, adopt a resolution to, number one, accept the report from the Public Works Director regarding the 2013 Consumer Price Index Utilities Rate Adjustments, and number two, direct the Public Works Director to implement subsequent CIP utilities rate adjustments and solid waste contract rate adjustments through calendar year 2017 after providing at least 30 calendar days' written notice to the City Council and customers of the annual CPI adjustments, revised rates, and certifying that the adjusted rates will not result in revenues in excess of the anticipated operating and capital costs and reserve requirements.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go on to the award of contracts for construction support services and construction management services related to the Twin Cities Road Roundabout Project.
Madam Mayor, I've asked Deputy Director Gwen Owens to make a brief presentation on this item.
Thank you. The Twin Cities Roundabout plans are completed, and we plan to advertise in early spring. As part of the roundabout project, the city had cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the $1 million of shop money for construction funds. The agreement requires the city to follow all state and federal laws, regulations, procedures, and standards. Specifically, Caltrans consultant selection procedure prohibits the opening of consultant cost proposals until negotiation begins with that consultant. Additionally, the cooperative agreement requires the city to contract construction services with the design consultant. Before you tonight are the approval of two contracts associated with the Twin Cities Roundabouts. OmniMeans for construction support services and SOMAS for construction management services. The city is required to contract with OmniMeans per the Caltrans agreement. Given the complexity of the project regarding utility relocations and Caltrans requirements, and additionally, the resources needed to adequately provide construction management services, the city decided to issue a request for proposal for the roundabout construction management services. SOMAS was deemed the most qualified construction management firm through a consultant selection process. SOMAS's contract included approximately $118,000 for construction staking and $60,000 for material testing. Construction staking is typically performed by the contractor, but due to the complexity of the roundabouts, it was decided that the city would achieve a higher level of control and accuracy by having SOMAS complete the work. Additionally, material testing provides independent quality assurance. Neither of these tasks are considered construction management functions. The remaining portion of SOMAS's contract represents construction management functions and equates to approximately 13% of the estimated construction cost, which is in line with industry standards. Both contracts are time and materials, and on a time and materials basis, and the hours worked will be the hours that are built. The estimated construction contract for the Twin Cities Roundabouts is approximately $4.6 million. As noted in the staff reports, there are potentially cost overruns. The construction cost is an estimate and may come in lower. Additionally, the city is looking at bid alternatives to lower the construction cost of the project, along with other ways to fund the project. Until construction is awarded, only the constructability review portion of SOMAS's contract will be authorized. Steve Margaroni from SOMAS, Ron Boyle from OmniMeans, and Public Works are available to answer any questions.
Council, questions?
I just had a question. Looking in the staff report under discussion, page one, it says the plans and specs have been completed. Is that represented by the engineering design under the cost estimate line on the following page, or is that? I was just wondering if that was accounted for in the total project cost, or if it was somewhere else.
That's in, on page three or four, it's under engineering design.
It is.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that is the cost there, okay. On the, on the RFP for SOMAS and Brinkerhoff and Nolte, how many of them actually submitted on the, on the proposals?
All three of those submitted, and we had a selection process, and SOMAS was deemed the highest. Additionally, SOMAS has specific construction management services that they've provided for roundabouts. Roundabouts are not necessarily a normal transportation project that has been constructed in this area, so that was an added benefit for SOMAS.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, the recommendation tonight, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute consultant support contracts for the Twin Cities Road Roundabout Project as follows. Number one, with OmniMeans engineers in the amount of $134,182 for construction support services. Number two, with SOMAS in the amount of $785,103 for construction management services, construction staking, and material testing. And number three, authorize funding contingencies of $14,000 for the OmniMeans contract and $79,000 for the SOMAS contract to address any needed contract amendments.
Do I have a second? Call for the vote, please. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, no communication, okay. Okay, so we're going to adjourn to the, we're going to adjourn to the Gulf City Council and to the being to the Gulf Successor Agency. Roll call, please.
Thank you, guys.
Board members, Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Champion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Okay, A is the adoption of annual successor agency administrative budget for July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. Inez?
Actually, that one's me, there's an error on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
This is the recommended...
You should have seen the look on Inez's.
This is the recommended fiscal year 1314 annual administrative budget for the City of Gulf, serving in its capacity as a successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. The budget includes only estimated general administrative costs of the successor agency related to duties and support services to the Oversight Board and Department of Finance and the County Auditor requirements. Costs are, costs that are directly associated with work on specific approved projects on the recognized obligation payment schedule are recoverable from other designated ROPS fund sources. The source of funding for the admin budget is the successor's agency's redevelopment obligation retirement fund. The ROERF is the fund that receives money from the County Auditor Controller to pay the agency's enforceable obligations. The county gets its money from previously redevelopment property tax trust fund, which was previously distributed to each former redevelopment agency. The personnel section of the budget identifies full-time equivalent positions that we estimate to be the maximum time staff members would devote to these Oversight Board-related operations. Even though the budget shows estimated expenditures in excess of $250,000, the cap is still $250,000 by the health and safety code. The maintenance and operations portion is based on staff experience with admin costs associated with similar decision-making bodies. It remains the same as last year's budget. This item is scheduled for approval by the Oversight Board at its meeting on February 7th, 2013, assuming the successor agency adopts it tonight. And that concludes my report.
Questions, council? Would you read the recommendation, please?
Adopt a resolution as a successor agency to the former Gulf redevelopment agency, adopting the successor's agency's administrative budget for July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014.
Move the recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, secondly is a resolution of the successor agency Oversight Board adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for July to December 2013. Now, if that sign is...
Good evening. Good evening, chair and board members. This evening, staff is recommending that the board approve the resolution for the ROPS covering the period of July through December 2013, which is now being referred to as ROPS 13-14A, which represents the first part of the fiscal year pursuant to the requirements of AB 1484. And by way of background, I know Sandy already mentioned this, but basically what we're still dealing with is all the legislation that the governor signed, which basically abolishes every redevelopment agency, and as Sandy mentioned, we did elect to become the successor agency on January 7th, 2012. I would like to highlight a couple of areas with the items that are included in this ROPS. And Exhibit A actually goes through, there's five sections to the ROPS now. The very first one is basically our contact information. The second one is the summary page, which represents that the total administrative costs are a total of $125,000. We will be claiming that for the first six-month period. Again, we have up to $250,000 over an entire fiscal year, so we are reporting $125,000 for the first six-month period. And the total amount of what we believe are enforceable obligations and subject to the RPPTF, which stands for the Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund, is just about $1.3 million. Those items include debt service that will be due in September, again, the period from July through December. It also covers some consulting costs related to the wind-down activities, some legal services, primarily with the firm of VB&amp;K, some independent accountant services. We had to expand our scope for the city when we have to include the successor agencies within our financial statements. It also includes depayments pursuant to the lawsuit settlement with Citizens Community Services District. We actually flatlined that. We're not really sure what the county will actually distribute, but we just decided to take a safer approach and just flatlined it, whatever they received last fiscal year, we're just estimating the same amount. So that's the third item of the ROPS. The fourth item is just basically notes, it gives us an opportunity to expand on why we believe it's an enforceable obligation. And lastly is what they call the true-up, which is actually looking at the prior ROPS period for ROPS 2, which was July through December 2012, and what we actually submitted in our ROPS versus the actual expenditure. So that's the true-up period amount there. So it's important that if there are any questions, I address them with you this evening. It is hopeful that once the successor agency approves the ROPS, that we can then submit it to the Oversight Board. The law does state that if we fail to submit our Oversight Board-approved ROPS by March 1st to the State Department of Finance, State Controller's Office, and County Auditor Controller, that there is a penalty of $10,000 per day to the city. And additionally, there are some other provisions that they can reduce our administrative allowance. So with that, I would ask for your approval of ROPS 13-14A. If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to address them this evening.
Are there any questions, council?
Just in your defense there, the first thing for the successor agency does say aye. I can see where you got the ayes.
Could you read the recommended action, please?
Recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the former Galt Redevelopment Agency, approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for a period of July through December, two thousand and thirteen pursuant to the requirements of Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-four.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please. Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Excuse me, Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks, report.
Yes, at the December eighteenth council meeting, the city council requested that staff bring back a report to make changes to regional board appointments. Before you and your packet is a spreadsheet with all the appointments, including regional boards that the city council serves on, appointments to committees that are made by the council as a body, as well as appointments made by individual council members. At this time, I suggest that we go through the spreadsheet and start with the regional board appointments that the council serve on, which is the bottom half of your spreadsheet. And we can just start at the top if that works for all the council members, which is the Galt Middle School JPA. Are there any changes made to that committee? Okay, CAF?
I was going to put the alternate out so that Councilman Champion was interested he could have it.
Okay. The Middle School JPA?
We're on CAF.
CAF.
Oh, we're...you want to go back to the middle school?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, no. Okay, sorry.
We passed that, we're on it.
So CAF, we're making a change?
So I guess I nominate Councilman Champion as the alternate for CAF.
Is that okay with you, Councilmember Champion?
Yes.
Okay, just make it, we have...
Yes. Then that's a motion by Councilmember Cruz.
Nomination.
Okay, any other nominations?
No.
And I don't need a second?
Okay.
Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, the Cable Commission, we don't...Sacramento State HOG, we have Mark Cruz as the alternate, Barbara Payne as the full member.
Wait a minute. Was that a different one than you got? No.
Which you could tell for the...
You skipped over STAs, that's another one.
No.
Wait.
Not there yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, I crossed you off in the wrong place.
Sacramento Area...
It's late.
Except I'm having to tell you.
I'm sorry.
Sacramento Area Council of Government?
Okay.
State HOG.
Okay.
Are there any changes to that?
Previously, I had requested that my alternate take over my regular position, and I'd like to serve as his alternate.
Okay, I move to make Mark the representative and Barbara the alternate. You okay there? You okay?
You are. That's what causes problems personally.
We chucked you up anyway.
No more water for you.
I flanked away, okay. I think I better. I'm on the wrong side, sorry. Okay, so we're going to make a change for...to switch them. So Councilmember Cruz as the full member, Councilmember Payne as the alternate.
Call for the vote.
Okay. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
STA?
I respectfully ask someone else to take it over.
I'd like to nominate Kurt Champion.
You okay with that, Kurt?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. You want to keep the alternate?
Yeah, just in case.
Mark, do you want to stay the alternate, or...okay.
Okay.
Okay, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, Air Quality?
I...State HOG and the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality like to have the same representatives for each of those agencies, so I would be happy to give that over to Mark Cruz, who was willing to take it unless...who is the alternate on that?
Me, do you want to be the alternate, so...
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Okay, I move to...I nominate Mark for the representative and Barbara for the alternate.
Okay. Councilmembers Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Sacramento County Adultation Agent Commission?
To comment on that, I no longer represent that because I was there as an ex officio member for the focus group of South Carolina Service, and it's no longer...there is no focus group anymore.
So we'll take that entire thing.
It no longer exists.
Got it.
That's right.
Okay, we skip the next two and go down to the Public Safety Committee with no changes. Green Print Steering Committee, no changes?
No changes.
Sacramento Public Library Authority?
I would like to put that one up and nominate Barbara Ford if possible.
I thought we used to volunteer here.
We've got everybody nominating each other, so do you want to do it?
Okay, so Cruz nominates.
Okay, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Last go?
Last go is going to be Vice Chair on the last go committee.
So he's along... No changes?
He's actually changing positions.
Yeah.
You're not changing as an alternate, you're actually moving up the change.
I'm moving to Vice Chair, yeah.
Okay, he has the two-by-two?
No changes.
Okay, no changes? Sacramento County JPA and homelessness?
Well, I guess no changes, but we haven't really been doing.
Yeah, he called us right off.
No.
Shop local? Have you ever...
No.
It wasn't.
Well, I miss the...I'm okay with my position. Do you want to remain on shop local?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Are you keeping yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Independence Day?
That's me and Mike.
No changes?
Same.
And Chamber Economic Development Committee?
I understand that one, Barbara?
Yep.
Okay, so then, next I propose that we move to if there are any changes on committees or commissions that council appoints as a body, and I can go through those. The first is the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. There are no term endings until the end of the year.
I'd like to point out, I think it was reversed. I think either was Payne's appointment and Yan's Sheldon's appointment.
These appointments are actually made by the entire council. And if you look under Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, it'll say appointment approved by council. Yeah, so it's there in a column, but, you know.
Yeah, because those people here are all, "Did I nominate these people?"
Yeah. Measure R is also approved by the entire council. There are no appointments up at this time.
Yeah, there's a vacancy.
Just wanted to point it out, it is an appointment made by the body, the council as a body.
I thought there was a vacancy on that one.
Okay. There is one vacancy.
On what?
And we're...we are...there are no terms ending, there is a vacancy. We're trying to get interest in it, we've publicized it, and still working on that one.
Which one, I'm sorry, did you...
Measure R.
So if you know anybody who wants to be involved in Measure R, please let me know.
We have one vacancy to fill with the term...through two thousand and fourteen, so we're still another year on that. Relocation Appeals Board, those are appointments made by the council as a body, there are no terms coming up for a little while. And the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, council just actually reappointed...
Silas.
Silas Martinez. And the Sacramento Yodle, Mosquito and Vector Containment District, council did just reappoint Fred Gayle to that. Then we can go up to appointments made by individual council members. We do have one letter of interest for the Youth Committee before you from Otto...
Cuffin.
He was the reappointment for Sheldon.
Okay. Okay, Kurt. And at this time, we'll make those changes, and that's it for the committee.
We're still looking for somebody.
We are short on beautification. We do have some vacancies.
Wasn't Karen Stifler Sheldon's appointment? In Emmanuel Lopes' year appointment, Barbara?
Emmanuel is no longer on the committee.
I think it was...I think it's right. I think. I think Stifler was mine.
I'm just going off the old...this old one back from October, when you had...
Yeah, and you've made appointments since then?
No.
Well, you have a vacancy, I believe. You have a vacancy on that committee. You still have an appointment to make.
Is that the beautification?
On beautification.
The beautification committee, but she had her name in the call. Maybe you gave the appointment that night.
You know, there's...
Yeah.
There's only one person.
Yeah, and you said you'd wait. Yeah, and I am expecting a letter any day.
I do have somebody very interested, she's attended two meetings, and I heard tonight she was going to be submitting a letter, so we might have this one at least before you at the next meeting.
And we do need somebody for the Commission on Aging, if anybody knows anybody.
Yes, we have vacancies on beautification, on the Commission on Aging, on the Galt Youth Committee, and one on Measure R. So, your friends and family.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Then we move on. Next before you tonight is the adoption of Form eight oh six. Council adopted the current Form eight oh six in December, as required by the Fair Political Practices Commission, which allows a public official to participate in decisions to appoint him or herself to external boards with economic benefits. So as required by the FTPC, this form, once approved by the city council, will be placed on our website. So at this time, I ask for approval of the Form eight oh six with the current changes that council just made to the committee. So, okay. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, everybody up there, out there, wake up. Any comments from staff?
Uh...
Okay, Eddie.
Sorry.
Any comments by city council members?
We're going home.
Yeah. First of all, as some of you probably have heard, we are suffering from cold, some of us up here.
How did the rest of it?
It'll be next time, yes. Our chief over there. We have some people around us every day, okay? We typically don't notice them, let them walk around you until we need them. We see them in the stores, and this happens every day. These people are military. I'm talking about our heroes. Power Department, CERT, CFD, Police Department. So next time you see one of these people, not that you necessarily take them for granted, but maybe go up to them and say hello, say thank you. My deepest condolences to the Tom family. I would like to ask staff, we have property, South of Harvey Park, if they could come back with some numbers for council, so that we could possibly open that up for a dog park in Kevonton's name. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That's a wonderful idea. Barbara?
Okay. I attended the California EPA, and I shared that wonderful information with Sandy and Chris for them to protect it from them. Also, the Honor the Game, which has...it's actually the program that started with Parks and Recs, and they are hosting seminars put on by the Positive Coaching Alliance, working with the coaches, they're coaching the youth, to think, and this could not be more appropriate, that there's more to being involved in sports than winning. There's integrity, and I have to do a little comment there. It seems like recently, we've been hearing so many bad things about some of our sports people, that think it's great that we're starting at the grassroots to make some cultural changes on how we think about sport. So there's a group of people that are working with the city to, in addition to working with the coaches, with this idea of honoring the game, to work with the parents and the children, and to make it complete. So we are having a fundraiser, it's a spaghetti dinner, March the second, and the tickets are ten dollars. Ida De Niere, the famous cook of golf, is going to be fixing spaghetti. And it's from five to eight, it's at the Littleton, and I hope you all will come out and support it, because I think it's a great cause. Sports is so important in our lives. I mean, look at what just happened in the Super Bowl. That was probably the only thing on anybody's mind, but we want it to be, again, we want it to have a real positive effect, and we want to start at this grassroots level, and I hope you will help us by going to that spaghetti dinner.
Yeah, that's the adding. I just have...they're usually on Saturdays. I had already talked to Steve and a couple of the city managers about this, so I hope this is okay, but I'd like to bring back, you know, we have had a couple of people call me up and ask me about internships, or they just wanted to walk around the city and see what each department did. A lot of other bigger cities have stuff called city university, but I was looking to scale something down like that, where we could have a class, maybe for four hours, one day where we could have some students sign up that wanted to learn about, you know, each department, and maybe for a half an hour, each manager come in and say exactly what it is their department does, just kind of give everybody a little synopsis of what the city does, so maybe we could encourage some younger people to look to the cities and to politics for where they'd like to go later on. And so if Steve is agreeable, I'd like a little...something made up to see if that's feasible.
So it'd be...
You got that look on your face?
Yeah, you did. Like a formal program where we would reach out to encourage people to sign up, or to be where, you know, if somebody's interested in doing something, that we could come around?
No, I was thinking of a class, like where the kids wanted to sign, because then we'd be doing it all the time, and you don't want to take up everybody's time, like just a one-day class where students could come and...or something like that.
Like a civics class.
Yeah, like a civics class, you know, teeny.
You have to comment, Inez?
I think a couple, well, maybe several years back, there was a program that we hosted here, and they were...it was open to the public, high school students primarily, younger kids, but each department made a presentation about their department, and so the audience, they would take a tour, they just kind of came in here, we told them what the city clerk did, and they made a presentation, finance. Finance, we had some... It wasn't PowerPoint, but flip charts and things like that, so it wasn't... I'm not sure if it was four hours, but it was definitely addressing local government and what each department was responsible for. So there was something that, I mean, Kurt was kind of like naughty, he's like, "Okay, I think maybe he was involved in it," but it's been years.
Is there someone at the school district that could be coordinating or making that?
I didn't get that far. We're just asking for, you know, some thoughts on it.
We could certainly... I mean, it would be relatively easy for us to put together a program. I think the big work effort would just be advertising it, figuring out how to recruit the kids involved in it, so if there was, you know, somebody else that wanted to, you know, I think the easy part for staff again would be to, you know, put a program together. I think the hard part would be to identify who the target audience is, go out to the schools, kind of do some marketing, and, you know, do all that kind of work.
Personally, I was just thinking older kids, I don't... You know, I was thinking kids in high school, and there's only two high schools, it wouldn't be hard to tell the two, three high schools, you know, just to tell if anybody was interested in signing up for a fly off on government for one day, half a day, two hours, whatever.
RLP program?
So get back with us, would you?
Yeah. Would you take her?
It was during the week, and we're in school, but they may show up. They're not even over here for hours.
Well, I'm...
Are you looking for us to come back with?
Some thoughts.
If it's feasible, if it's not.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to, before you got onto your comments, I was going to go back and circle back on, which is Mike's comment. Specifically, when we have direction from council to do, staff to do work in excess of two hours, it requires a vote of the city council, and we skipped past Mike's comment, which is to do the dog park idea, so the same point I'm going to make to Mike, I want to make to you, is we can certainly do that. What I'd request is that the council take a vote, and if that's a direction that they'd like to give to staff, is to put that program together, come back to the council with some different options, that I'd request that the council take a vote on that. And same thing for Mike, for your suggestion for staff, is that you make a motion that staff be directed to come back with some cost estimates and location ideas, as far as the location of a potential dog park in the Harvey Park. So we can take them one at a time.
I don't remember exactly, and it doesn't matter to me, but I think it might be something we'd need to address. I think that was in the master park plan to be a hot lock, and like I said, you know, it can truly be changed, but I don't know if there's any procedure that has to happen to vary from the master park plan, I think is what it's called.
One of the things we were going to look at is exploring whether or not it made sense to put it in the vacant field to the south, or find a location within the existing park. One of staff's, you know, one of the things we want to look at is there's some vacant property just to the west of the ball field there, that right now has a few picnic tables and some trees and large grass open space, that potentially that can be converted into a dog park area, so we'd want to bring back, you know, various options, various cost estimates for the council. How about you guys, if you did want to take a look at that piece to the south, then yeah, we'd want to take a look at that park master plan, and since we would be deviating from that, we'd want to see what we'd need to do to modify that, but it doesn't actually have to be in that location. I think the direction...
I was thinking too, it would be good if, and maybe Mike would be willing to do that, if he presented his idea to the Parks and Rec Commission to keep them in the loop. And I know you feel passionate about it, that's why I was thinking it would be good if you made that presentation to the Parks and Rec Commission. Is that a yes?
Well...
I mean, you don't have to, I'm just...
It's not something I have to.
No, you don't have to.
It's just that within their realm of...
Well, if we're going to be...
Something like that, go.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to be making some suggestions, some recommendations about funding in a park facility within our community, typically that is within the purview of the Parks and Recreation Commission. They would just make a, you know, recommendation back to the city council, so for example, we gave you a couple of different location ideas, what that might look like, and they would be able to weigh in and say, you know, here's... They don't have any final authority, but they'd be able to make a recommendation to the city council.
Because that's just one idea. It may not be a park, so if I go to Parks and Rec, and we figure out some other area, that's why I'm asking for staff to recommend it first, and then we can narrow it down there, then we can go ahead and go to Parks and Rec Commission, if that pleases you.
I thought you were asking to... About a dog park.
Well, I was asking if it was feasible to do that. I just need some numbers head of time, if we want to work that direction. I understand we have to go to Parks and Rec.
No, you don't have to.
It would be appropriate. It would be appropriate.
Yeah, it's a clue. What's the...
Let's just phase one of first. Well, I guess I'm hearing some different things now. I mean, if the direction is for us to evaluate what it would cost to put a dog park in Harvey, that's a very specific direction that we can go take, and we can come back with some options. If you want to look at other alternatives to doing not just the dog park, but maybe doing something else, then maybe it would be more appropriate to first have that discussion with the council, agendaize that and say, "Okay, let's come..." What are the various options that we could do besides a dog park, and maybe that's one of the options, but there may be three or four other options out there, so I guess we need some direction as far as exactly what we're being asked to do, and then the council will take a vote.
I guess let me be more specific. In honor of Kevin Tom, I want to see something in his memory for losing his life in the line of duty. My thought was, yes, south of Harvey Park, I know it would keep everybody in the loop, but I just wanted to get staff to give us some numbers, to see what we could do. If I could start out in that direction, if we need to go Parks and Rec, keep them in the loop, we will do that.
So specifically for the dog park concept?